Hi, this is County Judge Samaniego. The 2020 Census Count is incredibly important for El Paso. It helps our school, healthcare, food and housing programs get the money they need.
This is County Commissioner Vince Betis for Precinct 3. With your participation, the programs that support affordable housing, public education, and affordable healthcare can receive the funding they deserve.
This Commissioner called L. Robinson, Precinct 4. Without you, these programs could not be successful.
This is Commissioner David Stout. Participate online, by phone, or by mail. Everyone in El Paso County must be counted, even children and babies. Your responses are safe and required by law to be kept confidential.
Hi, this is Commissioner Carlos Leon from Precinct 1. Let's come together and fill out those 2020 census. Together and fearless we come.
The County of El Paso Public Works Department is offering sandbags at no cost or requirements to the public. The sandbags are outside of the facilities and are available 24 hours a day. The location of the county facilities are the following. The Roden Bridge Fabens warehouse located at 1331 North Faben Street in Fabens, Texas, 79838. The Roden Bridge Canotillo warehouse located at 191 Canotillo Avenue in Canotillo, Texas, 79835. And the Roden Bridge Montana warehouse located at 14698 Van Lee, El Paso, Texas, 79938.
Don't wait in line, pay online. Visit the Financial Recovery Division website at http://www.epcounty.com/budget/financialrecovery.html to make your payments online or find out more about our kiosk locations. We now accept payments on misdemeanor, felony, and justice of the peace cases.
You can now watch Commissioners' Court meetings on YouTube. Go to youtube.com and search for "El Paso County Commissioners" or "El Paso County, Texas." Subscribe to our channels to see our latest videos.
Did you know the County of El Paso's Purchasing Department is responsible for ensuring that all items and services needed by various county departments are purchased in the matter required by the state of Texas? Whether through formal sealed bids or smaller dollar quotations, the county purchasing team is dedicated to finding the best contracting return on your taxpayer dollars. Additionally, the Purchasing Department is responsible for the tracking of inventory within the county and properly disposing surplus to public auctions. For questions about how to become a vendor and compete for county contracts, or to learn more about public auctions, please contact us at telephone number 915-546-2048.
The 346 District Court Judge Angie Juarez Barred started the El Paso Veterans Treatment Court Program in 2012 for veterans and active service members that have been arrested and charged with a felony or misdemeanor criminal offense. To be considered for the specialty court, the statutory criteria includes be a veteran or current member of the United States Armed Forces, including a member of the Reserves, National Guard, or State Guard, and suffer from a brain injury, mental illness, or mental disorder, including PTSD, or be a victim of military sexual trauma, all occurring or resulting from military service. Call Sylvia Serna, Veterans Program Director, at 915-546-2119, or email her at scerna@epcounty.com for any information. Did you know that the County of El Paso's fixed asset control and inventory disposal is handled through the Purchasing Department? Throughout the course of each business year, the county holds live public auctions to dispose of aged equipment, vehicles, furniture, and other items that are no longer needed. To find out about upcoming auctions or to learn more about the county's inventory disposal process, contact the Purchasing Department at telephone number 915-546-2048.
I think we have Jessica today.
Jessica.
Yeah, we're up. Go ahead, Jessica.
Just in the Leon. Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Commissioners' Court is meeting in special open session. Today, we are joined by ASL interpreters Maria Esnandez and Dario Garcia. Would you please rise and join us for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Item number three is public comments. At this time, we don't believe we have anybody signed up to speak for public comments, or will take no action for item number three. Item number four from the regular agenda: Discuss and take appropriate action on the fiscal year 2020 through 2021 budget for the County of El Paso, Texas.
Good morning, Judge Commissioners. We just want to ask if we can go ahead and read in items four, five, six, and seven to right now. We may get to item number eight today, but I believe we're going to give an overview today, but we also have Central Appraisal District on the line already. So if we could go ahead and read all those items in through number seven, Jessica?
Yes, item number five. Receive a presentation from El Paso Central Appraisal District on the County of El Paso 2020 Certified Appraisal Rule. Item number six, receive a financial report and fiscal year 2020 through 2021 revenue projection from the county auditor and take appropriate action. Item number seven, receive a presentation on county revenue and expense budget scenarios for fiscal year 2021 and take appropriate action.
Thank you, Jessica. I believe we would like to start off with a presentation from the Central Appraisal District. Is that correct, Wally? I think you're silenced.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you very much.
Sounds good. Good morning, Ms. Kilgore.
Good morning. How are y'all this morning?
Hold that point up.
Good morning, Ms. Kilgore. Nice to have you here.
Good morning, Judge Commissioners, and everybody else that is trying to do business individual in this new age that we're in. I'm going to, you guys have the numbers, so we're not going to go over the numbers. Wally and his staff have got a really good handle on what the numbers are. We'll just go over a little briefly. David Stone is here, so we can always answer any questions. I'm more concerned about what's going to happen for 2020 into 2021, and I felt like it was very important to visit with the Commissioners' Court to give you from the beginning what you're going to have to watch out for. I know you already are seeing the changes that you're having to do throughout the county, and of course, the budget is definitely going to affect that. First of all, I'd like to let you know, not everybody realizes this, my staff have been here the entire time. We were gone a little bit in April to put in safety measures and do major cleaning. We've continued to clean. We spray the building, the inside of the building every morning. I have 35 ARB members, only seven said they would not attend, but we have had face-to-face hearings all summer long. We started mid-June instead of in May, so we were about a month late. We had pretty much the same number of protests. We had close to 20,000 protests this year. Seventy-five percent of those protests were filed by property tax agents. So you can see the majority of it, and the majority of the value, 86% of the value, was protested by property tax agents locally. So just kind of give you those a little bit of information. Our hearings were held face-to-face. The governor has not changed any of our deadlines at the appraisal districts. The taxing entities needed those certified values. Even though the law changed in the last legislature that allows us to certify an estimate, we felt like with everything that was going on, you needed actual numbers. So we worked very hard with the ARB, and whether I agree with what they do or not, they were here every day. They heard hearings, along with my staff, of course, virtually over the phone and face-to-face in person. We limited the number of people in the building, so it took us a little bit longer to have the hearings. After every hearing, we totally wiped down the area before the next hearing happened. Our tax agents, we had virtual, we had it over electronic means, so that they were not here every day, all day long, so that we could bring in the public. And it worked out. We certified on time. We, number of protests that were filed, we certified a little over 95%. When you look at the value, we were over 97% that we certified. That is quite an accomplishment, considering we didn't even start having hearings until mid-June, and we were finished by the 20th of July. We had four or five Saturdays that we were scheduled with the public. We got it done, and I just want you to know, my staff worked their little heinies off, and so did the ARB. They were here every day, and I just need to give them a little kudos on that. What we have found, and I need to start working on the 2020. In legislature, there was an exemption filed for disaster. We have already received, and I'm sure you have too, from the governor and from the Attorney General, and from the author of the bill that was passed. Disaster exemption allows a property owner to come in and, depending on the percent of physical damage, get the value adjusted by that percent off of the market value because of the damage. Well, what we have found is we have over 5,200 exemptions were filed by property tax agents and large property owners claiming that economic disaster meets the letter of the legislation. Again, we have a general opinion, the option of the bill, that no one has physical, but we have 5,200 applications that were submitted, exemption applications. I denied all 5,200 of those exemptions. They will be able to file a protest, they will have a hearing with the Appraisal Review Board, they have 30 days from the date of that denial, which was the end of July. They'll have a hearing, they've already told us they're going to court. Your potential loss at the minimum of a 15% would be about $931 million in value, almost $932 million in value. I believe, I don't, I'm not, I couldn't remember your tax rate, so I was using 45 cents. That's about $4.2 million in tax levy if this is allowed. Now, it will go to court, it's going to court throughout the entire state. Appraisal districts have denied it, denied the exemption. We do realize that the ARBs have been told by their attorneys to listen to the hearings, of course. If the ARB does grant the exemption, then the appraisal district will have to file a lawsuit. If the ARB denies the exemption, then the property owner will file a lawsuit. So either way, you're going to have lawsuit on this value. We are hoping that one of the larger districts will carry the ball on this in the state, but you need to be aware of what's coming down the line, and just kind of have that in the back of your minds. Another thing that we are looking at, that we have heard throughout the hearings, is the property agents and your larger property holders wanted the value adjusted based on COVID because of the closures, and I totally understand. When a hotel's occupancy is down as low as it is because they were having to close down, when restaurants are only at 50%, you know, there is some adjustments. But that will be for 2021. We did not make any adjustments for 2020. I can tell you, the Appraisal Review Board did a very good job at looking at the evidence this year between agent and individual homeowners. They treated everybody very fairly and very equally, so the percentage of change was fairly reasonable. But we have been told by local property owners, mostly agents and, of course, your larger property owners, that they intend to file lawsuits to go before mediation and potentially court to have somebody rule that they can take the COVID economic issues into play. So not only have you have those group filing for the exemption, you also have them filing to get a value adjustment. So I just kind of wanted to give everybody a heads up on that. The agents filed about 15,000, 15 and a half thousand protests this year. We currently have about 339 lawsuits on the books, so you figure out of that 15.5,000 lawsuits, I mean protests that were filed, you're going to have a big number of lawsuits. Now, they have 30, 60 days, I'm sorry, 60 days from the date of their board order, so most of them won't start filing those lawsuits, well, until this month, about towards the end of this month. So I just, you know, these are some heads up. Now, also, going into 2021 appraisal year, it is our official reappraisal year, but I will tell you this, we will more than likely be reappraising not only 2021, but also 2022, 2023, and going into 2024. And you used to ask why when we only have to do it every three years? Because this is going to take three years, I think, to cycle out. So we will be looking at total values for the next four years. Everybody will be getting notices. At this point, that's what we're looking at. It may change, but we are going to be watching those numbers. The 2021 numbers, we will be taking, we're into the fifth month of, actually, into the sixth month of an economic downturn in the way of vacancies and the way of incomes that businesses are having. So we will be looking at what market would be pre-COVID, and then what is market now because of COVID and the closures that have had to happen. So we are going to have to be making adjustments. Residentially, homeowners, we're not seeing the slowdown at all. You may be seeing the slowdown of new construction, but you are not seeing the slowdown of sales. The sales for residential properties is very, very healthy, and so that may be offset. We'll see, we'll see what happens after January 1. But please keep in mind, Commissioners, January 1 is the date that we have to be looking at going forward. I think that that's all that I wanted to say to you. Okay, so that, mostly what we wanted to give you an idea on is what's coming down the pipe, because your budget is going to be going into the 2021 year, and you need to be aware of, we had a really good appraisal roll that was turned over to you for your tax roll. We had some good numbers in there. I'm just one of these ones, let's be really cautious, because values very potentially could go down in 2021. And with these lawsuits out there, we'll see. I do not anticipate the exemption lawsuit from being finalized or acted on for probably a year or two. It'll take that long to go through the processes. It may end up being a state Supreme Court case, because it does affect the entire state of Texas on that disaster exemption legislation. So that being said, questions? Comments?
Just comments, Ms. Kilgore. Thank you very much. We're always, you know, very pleased when we get this kind of an education, and I know it's been difficult for you and your team, but we thank you. I know it's a constant situation, and you kept going, so we want to thank you for that. And it is uplifting. I was thinking it'd be a little bit more, you know, not as bright in the horizon, but it looks like some, you know, good things are taking place with the sales of homes and some other variables that you mentioned. But I'll just leave it. Wally, is there anything that relates, or Betsy, that relates to our budget that might be important to ask at this point in time as we move forward into our budget?
So Judge Wally Hargrove, the Office of Budget and Fiscal Policy. The appraisal rolls, as presented and received from the district, have been taken into account for both our tax calculation purposes and our revenue estimation purposes. As noted, for fiscal year 2021, which is tax year 2020, our estimates appear to be reasonable going into the year. Our big caution year, as noted by our appraiser, will be 2021, which you will use to fund your 2021, 2022 budget. Also, one of the other notes, items that we will watch very closely, Judge, is as we see collection rates come in and collections materialize during the months of December, January, and postings will typically wrap up by middle to end of February. That'll also be a good indication as to any change we see in delinquency rates that may need to be taken into consideration at that time. But I want to thank the staff of the Appraisal District. I've been on the phone with them a number of times in the last few days, and the information they provided is very helpful for your purpose in balancing the budget.
And Judge.
When you said, when you said a few calls, I saw a smile in Ms. Kilgore. I think it was more than a few calls.
Yes.
A bit.
We, I will let the Judge Commissioners know, we were in constant communication throughout the summer protest season with the entities, giving them several reports so that they could see, you know, what was happening, and of course, letting them know the percentages. So we unfortunately couldn't meet in person. We had plans on meeting with everybody in March, and that changed, but that did not stop the communication, and I'm just very grateful for Wally being available when we can visit.
Well, thank you, Wally, for your team and Betsy as well. So Betsy, any further comments?
No, sir. We really appreciate the advanced work that was done, the advanced meetings, and the discussion about methods that would be used. It's really helpful to the county.
Thank you, Betsy. Well, thank you for the presentation. I guess we'll move forward. Ms. Kilgore, thank you and your team. Very much appreciate the relationship and the cooperation between us and yourself and your staff. Thank you.
Okay, Miguel, can you pull up? I believe we're ready. Wally, you want to go into the budget slides or the forecast slides?
Let's go to the budget slides, ma'am, if that's all right.
Yes, sir. Miguel, if you could pull those up, please? Thank you. Good morning, Judge Commissioners. Betsy Keller, County Administrator. So in light of the public health and economic So in light of the public health and economic impacts of the COVID-19 pandemic, this budget is vastly different from what we normally bring forward. While still based on the court's vision, mission, and goals to provide an extraordinary quality of life for all, it is also responsible and responsive to the uncertain situation we are all living in today. Over the past few months, our teams have presented policy, financial, and budget information in your monthly meetings. Today, we will share some updates along with additional information, our recommendations, and items for discussion for your approval of the FY21 county budget. We will be giving you an overview today and going through these over the next several days. And next slide, please. I'm sorry, back up one, thank you, Miguel. Thanks. So we are planning on presenting a comprehensive update on the strategic plan in the next couple of weeks. Dr. Lozelli Madrigal has developed a framework that ties multiple elements together from strategic planning to budgeting for outcomes, performance metrics, and continuous improvement processes. And we will present on that as well. We'd like to, we always like to just take a couple of minutes during the budget process to reflect on what's been accomplished through your budget. I won't read all of these, but I want to mention how some of these tie into strategic goals that Commissioner's Court has established. Your top strategic goal has been lead justice reform. Some examples from this past year where we have been working towards leading justice reform include enhanced magistration project that was funded in FY20, and it was implemented, and it will be fully funded in your FY21 budget. And then we also have a jail study that's at the presentation stage, as well as a comprehensive review that has been done on our indigent defense program. Transform Economic Development, this is one of your other top goals. Economic Development Impact Fund and Healthy Food Initiatives have begun. Those are well underway and, and being used now. Upgrade Infrastructure, we have several projects that fall under upgrade infrastructure, including your flood control projects that are under design and additional projects that the court recently approved. You also have your parks master plan underway. Those are just a couple of examples of where we're upgrading infrastructure. Increasing Tourism, this bullet's not mentioned on here, but it's a, it's a significant one. We finalized the Mission Trail Plan this year, and we are in the implementation phases. The Coliseum and Amphitheater Study is out to bid now. Under Promote Collaboration and Engagement, the Census Project is enhanced, it was enhanced this year and is well underway. Advance Community Support Services. Two significant accomplishments in, under this area this year is the migrant service coordination efforts have just recently begun. We've hired a person, they're already reaching out to local organizations, and they're also reaching out, she's also reaching out to other cities and counties with migrant service coordinators to understand better what they're doing to be effective. We also have homeless and reentry programs that are significantly underway. Value the El Paso County Family. During FY20, thanks to the work of the court and the budget that was allocated, we were able to give employee wage adjustments. We have a new collective bargaining agreement that we're adhering to. We were able to implement judicial and election, elected pay plans. They've all been put into effect during FY20. As far as strength in financial health, we hired our investment advisory firm, and those services are underway. And then optimize internal processes, one example of that is we have an internal control study that is in process currently with Weaver and Tidwell. Next slide, please. So these are some items that were discussed earlier on in the year with the court when we were looking at how to reduce our FY20 budget or to make deferrals. So some of these, like the traffic calming study, those, it was, it was a one-time study. We have implemented other measures into our designs to help address traffic calming. The cross-border survey was removed, the auditors portion of the auditor study was removed, and we're looking at funding that maybe into the future because the cost is greater than what we had budgeted. We did a one-time reduction in paving of $400,000. However, we were able to pave just as much roadway due to the decrease in oil cost. That will be discussed later on in the presentation. And then we reduced the binational affairs allocation. Later in our presentation today, we're going to be discussing some of your 2021 budget and whether you want to keep some of these items in or add some back in or remove anything. You'll see a list here of things that were suspended or are funded in FY21. And we will have an opportunity in the presentation today to go over these further and determine if there's something the court would like to do different than what we have currently funded. As we do every year, we have a register, a budget register that we will update and share with the court each day. And it will show how any changes the court makes would impact our bottom line. With that, I would like to turn it over to Wally Hargrove to continue our presentation.
Thank you, Betsy, nice presentation.
Thank you, Ms. Keller. Good morning, Judge and Commissioners, Wally Hargrove from the Office of Budget and Fiscal Policy. I'll be covering the next portion of this morning's budget presentation, and you'll also be hearing later today from Public Works, our grant staff, and Human Resources. As you can see on the slide, oh, next slide, please. As you can see here, our proposed budget for all funds totals just over $437 million. Majority of those are towards personnel expenditures for personnel-infringed benefits, operating expenses at just under $170 million, and capital at 23. By fund, your general fund is proposed at $356 million, a $4 million increase or 1.23%. Much of which we will go into in this presentation. That is the smallest budget change in recent history. Special revenues at just under $50 million, your debt service at approximately $20 million, capital projects at eight, and enterprise at $4 million. We will also, at the conclusion of this budget, and when we file the proposed budget with you later in the month for consideration of adoption in September, we will continue to recommend that we budget unappropriated, unallocated reserves at the 90% level. This is similar to what other urban counties are doing and will allow us to address any unanticipated emergencies should they arise during the upcoming year. I hope they don't, we need a calm year next year. The slides that are going to follow will provide you with an overview of our budget and spending by category. Next slide, please. This slide provides you with the view of the budget and the annual spend for all funds. The most significant decrease in each new year is because of the fact that we don't budget for grants until we receive them after the budget is adopted. For comparative purposes, your adopted budget at the beginning of fiscal year 20 was $464 million. You can see in the middle, we, as, as of the time of this presentation preparation, we were at $525 million, an increase of $61 million specifically due to the receipt of grants. Next slide, please. This slide provides you with a comparison of budget, budgets broken down in the categories of personnel, operating, and capital. You can see the largest component of our budget is personnel. As we set up the budget for our appropriated emergency reserve in FY21, the operation bar, which is currently $170 million on the far right, middle section of the screen, will increase as we set up that emergency reserve appropriation. As a reminder, we did reduce the budget mid-year of 2020 by 3%. And departments met that obligation and request from the departments. And departments were also requested to reduce eligible operating accounts for fiscal year 21 by 5%. My team further reviewed the budgets submitted and requested and made recommended increases and decreases, these, which were based off of trend estimates, bid awards, and contractual requirements. This amount of net decreases from department requests amounted to just over $3.6 million. Next slide, please. This is a recap that'll provide you with a full picture of available anticipated revenues in the general fund along with a reconciliation of the budget. The remaining funds available, our emergency 90% reserve is very level at the current time. I will be amending this when you see the budget register come up. This presentation, when it was prepared several weeks ago in its form, included the prior revenue estimate from the county auditor. We have since received a new revenue estimate Friday night and through yesterday afternoon. And those revenues have increased. And, and the fund balance projected by the auditor has also been adjusted downward slightly. But when I go over the budget register later today, you'll see this will leave approximately about 9.17% of the budget as we started this package. It's a little bit below our 10 to 15% goal adopted by the court, but certainly a manageable reserve position. The register has been updated, and I'll review that after today's presentation. I'd like to take a hard stop right here for a moment to see if there's any questions that are, have arisen to date. If not, I'll continue along my presentation.
Wally, a quick question on the fund balance estimate, how many days does that translate into?
So our operating expenses this year, I just got a new expense estimate yesterday from the auditor, excuse me, this weekend from the auditor. So right now, we're estimated to spend $307 million. If you look at a 260-day year. One moment. We spend just a little over a million dollars a day. His current revenue, fund balance estimate is $83 million. And so that's about an 80 million, an 80-day operating, which is well within the 60 to 90-day recommended. Of course, we like to be closer to 90 days in operating. This puts us at about 83 days, based on today's estimates.
Thank you.
Yes, sir. Just one thing to note, the way we've done this reconciliation in the past, we start with our beginning balance at our revenue estimates to show total available funds. At the time of this preparation, $388 million. Our budget of $355 million, right there in the middle column, middle of the slide, appropriated reserves at $29 million, leaving the 10% unappropriated for a total balanced available funding of $388 million. Next slide. These are some of the major changes in the current strategic projects that are being proposed in fiscal year 2021. At the top of your slide, current proposal includes $4.7 million for increased funding for our mobility projects. You received a presentation from Mr. Landeros from Public Works several weeks ago. That brings that total to $8.4 million for '21. An additional allocation of $1.2 million for stormwater funding, bringing that to $11.5 million for fiscal year 2021. Continued growth to Economic Development Impact Fund, bringing the Impact Fund up to $6.75 million separate and apart from the $1.5 million for the Healthy Food Financing Initiative, so a total impact of $7.25 million. We have reduced the funding for the rural transit funding by $1.2 million in fiscal year 2021. This new program requires $800,000 worth of funding is our current estimate for fiscal year 2021. So we reduced that strategic funding accordingly. And lastly, our capital transfer is being recommended, $8 million for fiscal year 2021, a reduction of $1.6 million below the current fiscal year. This is in an effort to also recommend a responsible and, and balanced budget that meets the strategic need of ongoing equipment replacement, but also to recommend a reasonable suggested balance budget. Next slide, please. I won't review all these, I'll just highlight a few, but this is other significant general fund appropriation changes that have been included in the budget, as Ms. Keller mentioned on your second slide, on some of our strategic investments that we're making. This budget does include $2.2 million for our collective bargaining agreement. We do have any contingencies, an additional $1 million reserve separate and apart from the $1.5 million we're recommending for the budget for the capital murder trial cost related to August 3rd. You'll receive a presentation later from Ms. Erica Ortega on suggested grant match increases totaling $1 million. And at the advice of County Attorney's Office, we've also increased our legal settlement amount by $900,000. The last material one I'll go over here with you is our employee health insurance. As suggested by your risk pool board, is increasing by about $1.3 million to be effective for the county share of the premiums effective January of 2021. On the right-hand side of this table, items that aren't included in the budget yet but are subject to further discussion and consideration is the startup of the digital library program, our binational affairs, and the cross-border study. Next slide, please. Key takeaways for the court on this slide is the change in valuation in the far right two columns. In the last four years, the value at the time we receive our certification in late July, which is what we base the tax rate calculation for according to statute, has increased when the final tax billions are sent out by an average of 1.5%. While overall, the average change in taxable value is 3.5% for the same time period. If the average change in certified to build value holds, we could see values end up somewhere in the area of $45.5 billion. That would replace the yet-to-be-determined at the bottom row in the middle where it says annual October. If, if prior year's averages hold true, that number would come in somewhere in the vicinity of $45.5 billion, a $672 million increase above the certified rules and could approximate an additional $3 million in revenue for the county. In one of your highlights over the past several weeks, we did confirm with CAD, and you just heard from CAD this morning, that they kept the same valuation methodology as they did last year. And they made their presentation at the beginning of today's meetings. Next slide, please. Overall, on net taxable base, finished the year certified at $44.8 billion, an increase of just under $2 billion, or 4.6% of that amount. $776 million represents new construction. That is very similar to what we've seen in the past two years, that's averaged closer to $760 million. Under protest right now, it's $919 million are still under appeal, which have an original value of just under $1 billion. Next slide, please. So to get ourselves accustomed to the new rate nomenclature imposed by Senate Bill 2, the old effective tax rate is at the top, that's the no new taxes tax rate. That was calculated at .483827. That tax rate, based off the new property values, generates an approximate $5.3 million in revenue. Our current tax rate that you see in the middle of this table is .488997. If the court were to consider keeping and maintaining the same tax rate that we currently have in place, that would generate an additional $2.3 million above the no new taxes tax rate. And the last tax rate presented on this table is what used to be known as the rollback tax rate, which is the maximum tax rate you could levy before going out to a required vote of the voters. That is now called the voter approval rate. That came in just over the current rate at .489493 and would generate an additional $200,000 above the current tax rate. Next slide, please. Our 2020 certified values, as I noted, went up by over $2 billion, or 4%. The home values in El Paso County that you'll see toward the bottom part of the slide rose from $130,068 to $131,438, an increase of, of over, just over 1%. If we were to maintain the current tax rate of .488997 in the middle column, as I noted, you'll see highlighted in green in the center, we could generate an additional $2.3 million. If we were to go as high as the voter approval rate, that would go up to 2.5 million, additional $200,000. Maintaining the current tax rate, as you'll, as if you've heard in the news, is, is being considered by not only UMC, the City of El Paso, and El Paso Community College, would impact the average taxpayer on the average county value home at $6.80 a year or 57 cents a month. Next slide, please. You will be receiving an update from Mr. Dion that will differ from this slide, but this was as of the date of this presentation. We had received our second revenue estimate at that point in time, it totaled $3.301 million. That estimate has now come up to $307 million, about $6 million higher. You'll see that in your budget register. Tentatively, that's a $4 million increase. He did revise his fund balance estimate down from 87 million to 83 million. Major changes that are still subject to change are attributable to sales tax. Sales taxes are still a little strange, to say the least. Just read an email that came out of the Comptroller's Office late last week that sales taxes across the state are up again. Just read an email that came out of the comptroller's office late last week that sales taxes across the state are up again by another four point three percent. We will, within the next forty-eight hours, we will know the impact of the county of El Paso, but we had two sharp months down. Last month, we ended up, and I'm going to be cautiously optimistic we'll end up this month as well. We must make final amendments on departmental changes for charges for service. Of course, this is volume-based. And we have just last week submitted our second round of negotiation estimates to the U.S. Marshals Office for federal prisoner revenue. Our goal is to conclude those negotiations prior to the adoption of the budget and present to you a rate offer from the federal government, which would impact the revenue stream and the budget revenue estimate for fiscal year two thousand and twenty-one related to prisoner revenue. And Judge, I'll still reiterate the one thing. Yes, sir.
This, this, this is Commissioner, before you, before you move on, can you go back a little bit and explain? On, I think it's on page twelve of the presentation where you have the addition, the, the tax rate, the, the, the three tax rates and the additional revenue for, and and you have it at five point three, seven point six, and then seven point eight, but on the next slide. The numbers that you have for, for potential added income over the new tax, no new taxes rate is two point three and two point five. That's, 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 that's the difference between the, that's the difference between the five point. That's the difference between the five point three and the seven point six and seven point eight, right? Is what we're talking about there?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. So the difference on this is when Mr. Dion prepares his revenue estimates, he takes into account the revised property values and the current no new taxes tax rate for that consideration. So that revenue growth, Mr. Dion, is already factored into his revenue estimate. If the court were to maintain the current tax rate, the difference that you see in this slide would generate an additional two point three million dollars above his current revenue estimate. But a good portion of that five point three has already been taken into account with the current revenue estimate based off of valuation growth.
Gotcha. Okay, thank you.
Well, Wally, just when's the last time that we had an adjustment by the, for the inmates that you discussed? When's the last time that, that we actually negotiated a different rate?
That was approximately four years ago, sir. We had increased the rate from seventy dollars a day to eighty dollars a day. We look at changing costs from year to year. We took a pass on renegotiating last year, but based off of our estimates for fiscal year two thousand and twenty, we chose to exercise that option. So it's been about four years, sir.
And you're also allowed to renegotiate it once every three years.
Once every three.
Oh, okay. And we're at this point right now, the third year?
We're at a fourth year.
We're in the fourth year and under negotiations now.
You have to pass last year. Okay, thank you. Appreciate that. Thank you.
The last, last, yes, sir. Okay, next slide, please. One more slide. And one more slide. Great, thank you. So as of the closing of July, which was just last week, the estimates for two thousand, twenty twenty are still anticipated to be the actual revenue estimates to be received are still anticipated to be below the budget for the first time in many years. As of the date of this presentation, the estimate was we were going to come in at two hundred and ninety-five million or four million under budget. That number is closer to two hundred and ninety-seven million dollars as this date in time, so a little closer to budget, but still under budget. If you look back over the past four years, actual revenues have exceeded general fund projections, mostly attributable to changes in sales tax and changes for charges for services resulting from our federal prisoner contract. I already mentioned in the prior slide, some of the changes you'll see in the immediate future are, will receive our sales tax revenue estimate in the next forty-eight hours. And we are in the second offer round for negotiation with the feds. As you heard from Mr. Dion yesterday, we're also at record low rates for interest, so interest earnings have been adjusted accordingly as well. Next slide, please. We are recommending to maintain the current strategy that the court adopted last year to sustain and grow the allocation the county makes to the Economic Impact Fund in direct proportion to growth and changes in our sales tax receipts. The goal is to grow this fund to a sustainable ten million dollar annual appropriation over the next few years. As you can see this year, as indicated in the third sentence on this slide, we are proposing the total fund be at seven point two five million dollars. The intent of this funding and the investment is to continue to attract business, stimulate commercial investment and property values, and create new jobs, all of which will be ever more critical than ever as we exit this pandemic in the near future. Just as a matter of information, in Texas, approximately half of Texas two hundred and fifty-four counties impose a county sales tax for, to use for property tax relief. The county, the county sales tax is collected in addition to state and local sales taxes. And as a reminder, this does reduce local property taxes by over eleven cents or twenty-two percent of our current tax rate. Next slide, please. This slide represents the top ten year-to-date sales tax recipients in counties through July of two thousand and twenty. For the first time in recent history, El Paso has moved into the top position. As you can see, we surpassed Midland, which also coincidentally had the largest decrease this year. This is certain, most certainly a result of a volatile petroleum market. The most significant spike across the state through July is in Hayes County, and if you're familiar with Hayes County, that's where the San Marcos outlet malls are. Sales taxes in Hayes County make up forty-four percent of their local budget. As a matter of information, sales taxes in El Paso make up just under thirteen percent of our budget. Exact reasoning behind the swing is somewhat difficult to determine. Even the state economists are scratching their heads to it. It's very likely released as a result of federal stimulus payments being received from the federal government, unemployment pay increases, and the likely shift of discretionary spending from areas of leisure such as going out to eat, movies, and things of that nature, more along the line of home improvement needs. If you've driven by Lowe's and Home Depot on any given weekend, it looks like it's Christmas at those stores. Talking to Chris Dathis in I T, you can't get pool repair people to come out and repair your pool because they're building so many pools right now as we, as we've shifted our spending trends to more stay-at-home items. As a reminder, excess sales taxes are transferred from the general fund to the debt service, which directly lowers. You know what? I need to go one slide forward. I apologize. I just got a chat on this. Can you go one slide forward? One more slide? Okay, thanks for the reminder there, Frank. So everything I just said relates to this slide here, but as a reminder, excess sales taxes are transferred to the general, from the general fund to the debt service, and that directly lowers the I N S portion of the tax rate as required by statute for fiscal year twenty, that amounted to just over one point three million dollars and was also a contributing factor to the calculation of the I N S tax rate this year. Next slide, please. This is the fiscal snapshot we presented last month. As discussed, this model has a revenue growth model at two and a half percent into the future and it's, and expense management at two percent. That goal is in accordance with our current strategic plan of alignment of our revenues and expenses. Revenues and expenses are predicted for the first time in a number of years to intersect in two thousand and twenty. So if you look at the middle of the slide, you'll see the bottom blue line intersecting the purple revenue line. Expenses are expected to surpass revenues. You'll hear that from the auditor's office in his presentation later this morning. But if we were to take into account, as I stated a little while ago, if we can grow that revenue to sustain two and a half percent and manage our future expense growth to two percent or less, we could swing that intercept back into a favorable position as soon as fiscal year two thousand and twenty-four. Of course, this is all somewhat fluid based off of what our local and national economy does as resulting from the impacts of the pandemic. Now, some of the items impacting this year's growth, and Ms. Keller alluded to those in your second slide, is some of our investments that we made in collective bargaining, normal personnel growth and wage increases, increased spending in our mobility projects, grant matches, contractual increases, and the new allocation we made this year for our recurring capital improvements. I will ask that you please note and remember that this, these projections are built onto the assumption that we keep and maintain the current tax rate. That could change based off any action taken subsequently by the court. Next slide, please. I already went over the current tax rates. However, I will note that I'm asking the court to consider and recommending that we consider proposing the current tax rate of point four eight eight nine nine seven as it does generate an additional two point three million dollars towards our general fund revenue. Helps keep us closer to the ten percent reserve position. Our goal's ten to fifteen percent and would allow us to stay just under that ten percent. The approach is also, as I mentioned earlier, this approach is also being discussed by city U M C and the community college. We did give these financial presentations to you in the prior slides and modified those and gave you new estimates during the month of January, April, June, and July. And we will continue doing that on a regular basis into the future, especially in light of the current fluid situation created by the pandemic. Next slide, please. Now, this is our historical tax rate over the last ten years.
This is Leon. If you go back that one, one slide, and if you look at the, the M and O and the debt service, now, on, on the tax rate, which, I know that one is, is sealed, but on the other one, we can go higher. And, but what you're recommending is leaving it as is?
Well, if, if, you technically can go up, I presented that to you a few slides ago. Your voter-approved tax rate is a slightly higher amount than the current tax rate. It would generate an additional two hundred thousand dollars. That is the maximum tax rate you could propose. As you noted, Commissioner, the debt rate is set. That is, that is our debt rate as calculated. The only change we would make if the court were to consider going up to the voter approval rate, again, like, like I mentioned, which is a nominal amount above the current rate, it would increase the general fund M and O by a slight amount and generate an additional two hundred thousand dollars.
But Wally, we base this budget on current rate, Commissioner Leon, if that answers your question.
Yeah, yeah, I, I just wanted to make sure, the first go around, I wasn't, I was a little doubtful, but now I'm okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
But this is Commissioner, but, but to make sure Leon's point. I mean, if, if we wanted to, not saying we do, but if we wanted to, there are certain things that we could take from the M and O and, and, and switch them over to the, to the, to the rate, like the paving programs and things like that, C I P. You know, that, that, that penny that we set aside for C I P and things like that, those can be, those can be moved over to the, to the, to the debt side, correct? And that rate can go up.
Yes, sir, you are correct. You'll actually hear that in some of our scenario proposals later this morning for the fiscal year two thousand and twenty-one budget and tax rate. Those would not impact our current tax rate, would have the ability to move those for future years out of M and O and over to I N S. And we're going to present a few scenarios with those suggestions later in today's presentation.
There was one item that the court did move this year to I N S, correct, Wally?
Yes, ma'am. Our state infrastructure bank, yes, ma'am. Just under four hundred thousand dollars was moved out of M and O and over to I N S as, as approved by the court.
The court approved that in the last couple of months, and that's important on timing. So if we're going to move additional items, we would have to be conscientious of the timing in the coming year. And we would have to move them during the year in order to be prepared for the next fiscal year budget.
Correct. If there's no further questions, oh, no, actually, I'll just make one last comment on this slide really fast. You can see in the middle years, two thousand fifteen through two thousand and eighteen, for four consecutive years, we maintained the same tax rate. Tax rate that was due to a combination of both our strong financial position and our reserves, as well as doing much to gain efficiencies throughout programs and reforms. The increase last year in the tax rate was specifically geared towards strategic investments, many of which remain and are enhanced in your fiscal year two thousand and twenty-one budget. Next slide, please. This tax rate chart is based off the current tax rates, tax rates, as we don't have the entities' rates yet for tax year two thousand and twenty. As a reminder, the county statutory tax rate has a cap at eighty cents. We're currently at forty-eight, just under forty-nine cents, and without sales and use taxes, our property taxes would be closer to sixty cents or seventy-five percent of our statutory limit. You will see also on the slide that the majority share of local taxes is made up by school districts at forty percent, city of El Paso at just under thirty, county at sixteen percent, your university medical center at nine, and the community college at five percent. Any questions here before I turn over the presentation to the next presenter? Hearing none, I would like to turn this presentation over to staff from Public Works, where you're going to hear from Ms. Norma Rivera Palacios, Mr. Jose Landeros, as well as Mr. Fernando Hernandez. Thank you very much.
Wally, thank you, Wally. Thank your team for us. Very well done, very succinct and well done. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Good morning, Judge, Commissioners, Norma Rivera Palacios with the Public Works Department. And joining me this morning is Ferny Hernandez, our Infrastructure Director, and Jose Landeros, our Planning and Development Director. We will be brief, but I think it's important for us to show, share some historical data as we provide key updates on our paving, stormwater, and comprehensive transportation projects. The first piece is the paving. In the graph before you, we use the columns to represent the miles of road in the county network or miles of road that the county is responsible for by year. Below in this same graph, you have this horizontal orange line that represents the paving that has been done throughout the years. As you can see, we have had a significant growth in responsibility. The advantage of the majority of the new roads is that they are new roads with a lifespan of twenty years if they are given the appropriate maintenance. Our goal is to pave ten percent of the road network yearly by paving, I mean, chip seals, fog seals, and/or overlays. Whatever maintenance is appropriate to add life or increase the life of a road. Unfortunately, it's hard for us to predict what the ten percent increase will be. So we will typically be running a year behind in our request for funds to maintain the ten percent paving. We will also need to start planning for the maintenance of the new concrete roads that we are paving with our new, with our new projects, as well as the watering, the watering and the maintenance of our new mediums. At this point, I will turn over the presentation to Ferny. Ferny leads the, the, the paving effort, and he will be able to provide you detailed information on the last two years of our paving program. Ferny?
Good morning, Judge, Commissioners, Ferny Hernandez with Infrastructure Services. On this slide, we present to you the, the breakdown that we did for F Y two thousand and nineteen and two thousand and twenty. As you can see, they're pretty similar in the makeup of the component. Basically, you'll have additional mileage that we did this year in overlay, and that's in part of our strategic plans to increase our, our overlay roadway construction instead of our chip seal. But you could see, basically, we did pave the sixty-three point seven miles, which is ten percent of our inventory of last year's calculation at a cost of four point four million dollars. This was in due because of the, the great price, price that we're able to get on the, the emulsion oil. We were able to get a, about a twenty-five percent savings on that oil, which allowed us to maximize the amount of chip seals that we did this year in order to meet that, those goals. Next slide, please. Here you could see a quick little breakdown of how we did our F Y two thousand and eighteen, which we paid eleven million, which we paved with eleven million dollars worth of money, and that was in use with the four point two million dollars from the general fund. As noted previously, we did four point four million dollars in, in F Y twenty, and we're requesting four point nine million dollars in F Y twenty-one, and that's to meet the, the increasing need of the roadway infrastructure. Next, I'd like to turn it over to Jose Landeros.
Thank you, Mr. Hernandez. Good morning, Judge and Commissioners, Jose Landeros, the Planning and Development Department. If we go to the next slide, this slide aims to provide some historical context to the county's ongoing but relatively recent investment in regional transportation solutions. In late two thousand and thirteen, the court adopted the optional ten dollar vehicle registration fee to contribute to the overall four hundred and twenty-five million dollar two thousand and thirteen comprehensive mobility plan. The plan was a partnership between the county and the Camino Real Regional Mobility Authority, the El Paso District of the Texas Department. Department of Transportation, the City of Socorro, and the Town of Horizon City, and it demonstrated the county's single largest investment in transportation solutions to date. Approximately one hundred and twenty five million dollars of that larger figure came in the form of local funds through vehicle registration fee bond proceeds, which are managed by the R M A, but spent as, as directed by the Commissioners' Court. Next slide. Of the sixteen projects that were on the previous slide, the county was involved in or managed seven of those projects, and those are listed on this slide here. You can see the beginning in two thousand sixteen, the county has roughly opened or celebrated a new facility coming online each year to date, and the final of these projects, Eastlake Boulevard Phase One, is set to be completed at the end of this month. The final project will complete the local government responsibility into two thousand and thirteen mobility plan. Further regional planning efforts such as these are now being coordinated through the, and led by the El Paso Metropolitan Planning Organization, or the M P O, who presented a twenty twenty regional mobility strategy to the court earlier this year, and there are a number of county-involved projects which are now part of that larger regional effort led by the M P O. Next slide. This is a listing of ongoing and active transportation projects, broken down into three categories, roadway, aviation, and transit and active transportation. We started F Y twenty with the opening of Vista del Sol Drive, and will soon see the completion of two critical roadways in the east El Paso area, Mission Ridge Boulevard Phase Two and Eastlake Boulevard Phase One. Eastlake remains the county's largest transportation project ever managed. At a roughly twenty nine point seven million dollar cost, this project even surpasses the ongoing construction of Belicano. The Belicano project is said to be completed at the end of calendar year twenty, but because of COVID nineteen and compliance with all local, local health authority directives for construction, that project may be extended into spring of twenty one to ensure that workers are able to maintain as safe a working condition as possible. We're also working on designing constructors hangers and constructing hangers, excuse me, out at the Fabens Airport, also in partnership with the Camino Real R M A. Additionally, our staff is working on expanding the regional transit that was described by Mrs. Keller and Mr. Hardroh earlier in the presentation, through the use of C I P twenty funds as provided and approved by the Commissioners' Court. We are working on a number of first-time sidewalk construction projects in the Canadillo community, in addition to designing and constructing the installation of bus shelters for our transit routes. Next slide. On the horizon, you can see that we have a number of construction projects that will be following the completion of design activity for projects like John Hayes, Bella Chili Road, and Tierra Estem. These projects are all identified as regional priorities by the El Paso M P O, and are funded through a combination of federal and state dollars. Additionally, these projects will require local matches from the county and any partner agencies involved. As you can see, for fiscal year twenty one, we do have the funding for the regional transit expansion included in that list, but that has already been accounted for in the F Y twenty one budget. Next slide. Transitioning away from, from road infrastructure now into flood control, the county's flood control projects, activity is bifurcated into two, into, into two areas, planning and project development, which is managed by our staff, and planning and development, and active construction projects, which is managed by Mr. Hernandez and his staff in Infrastructure Services. To date, our staff has completed the Phase One update to the county's stormwater master plan, with the second phase of that plan scheduled to be completed in fall of this year. Additionally, our staff submitted a number of grant and loan applications to the Texas Water Development Board's Flood Infrastructure Fund Program in coordination with our consultant from the stormwater master plan. And last, we are working diligently to complete the county's interior drainage analysis, which coincides with the release of the Federal Emergency Management Agency, or FEMA, flood maps. While FEMA released preliminary maps last month, there are a number of properties throughout the valley, from upper to lower, from county line to county line, that are being proposed to be included in a flood hazard area due to ongoing certification issues related to the levees along the Rio Grande, which are managed exclusively by the International Boundary and Water Commission. Our interior drainage analysis study is related to the efforts by FEMA to certify these levees, and we will be reaching out to I B W C to discuss this matter further, and will present additional information to the court and on a future Commissioners' Court agenda item. I'll go and turn it back over to Mr. Hernandez to describe ongoing construction projects related to flood control.
Thank you, Jose. If you go back one slide, please. Okay, basically, I don't know if you remember the presentation that was presented to you on July the twenty seventh. This is pretty similar, as just as a recap. The twenty nineteen projects that were approved are, were Bailey, Celeste, and Tornillo, and those projects are already fully designed and are in the bidding process right now. Last I received word from purchasing is that they're going through legal review and should be hitting the, the streets out pretty quickly. And then the twenty twenty projects are in the design phase, and these are the six projects that were selected back in July, and we are starting the process of acquiring the, the consultants in order to start the design on this. Basically, these are the, the projects that we're looking for, for our stormwater, and we're also actively seeking FEMA grants to supplement through the Texas Disaster Emergency Response Program. And this is the, the conclusion of what we have for our presentation on the flood control projects.
Judge Commissioners, this concludes our presentation, and we'll be glad to take any questions the court might have for us.
Norma, once again, just want to thank your team. I can't begin to tell you the comments about the quality of work, you know, on the top level, you know, sort of, you know, things that are done in such a good way that people are appreciating and see no difference be, between any other, you know, either private or, or government constructions or road constructions. So just want to thank you, and especially all the, the site things that, that you do, for example, on the memorial and using our resources to, you know, lower our costs and participate and collaborate on that memorial. So just want to thank you, take the opportunity. One of the great reasons of going through the budget hearing is really to, you know, an opportunity to hear from you, but also for us to thank you for a lot of great work that is being done. I was very proud. Like I've said before, it's always nice to, to be out there and, and get the comments about the quality of work of your team and Jose, and Sal, and Ferny, and everybody else. So great thanks from us to, to your team.
Thank you, Judge, and on behalf of the staff, I'd like to thank the court for their support. And I also will share this information with our staff, you know, that a lot of these big projects takes a lot of staff members, and they're proud and glad to always help out. So thank you.
Thank you, Norma. Thank you, Jose.
Thank you, Judge Commissioners.
Thank you.
Thank you, you all. Have a good day.
Thank you.
All right, if you go back to the presentation, Miguel, thank you. Judge, I too would like to give a big shout out and a thanks to our Public Works team, but also to the court's initiative to look at staffing and increasing the staffing in this area of provision of services over time. I'm the guy in the room that's been here almost longest. There's someone on the screen who will present to you later who's been here a little bit longer, but seeing the evolution of our Public Works Department, our infrastructure development, and the return on your investment from selecting the subject matter experts that are leading this division, we're at a place that, that I can say is unprecedented, unprecedented in my thirty years of county service. So I want to thank our Public Works team for their hard work and dedication, and you for your investment.
And that's a great point. That's a great point. We, we do a lot of things internally and use our expertise. And once again, we'll be making reference so much to the memorial, but for example, just what Lydia was able to accomplish because of her expertise as an architect, I mean, just the savings was just immense of being able to get her to do the drawings and get her to, to, you know, have that relationship with, with a construction company, with J R. And it's a great, I keep hearing from J R., you know, just of the, just the things how they, they flow and the relationship between them and, and Lydia and Veronica and the staff. So I think we do reduce a lot of costs on, on some of these individuals that are internal, and we don't have to go outside of our organization to accomplish some, some great projects. So thank you for reminding me about that, their expertise and their ability to, to lower our costs when we decide on certain initiatives. Thank you, Wally.
Yes, sir. Next slide, please.
Thank you all for your kind words. We really appreciate it, and I'll make sure and share it with the staff.
Judge Commissioners, this slide is just a listing of our current anticipated three eighty one agreement payouts for fiscal year twenty one. For fiscal year twenty one, they totaled just over one point five million dollars. Next slide. Important, and the takeaway from this slide is the new revenue that's anticipated above and beyond our current tax revenue base for fiscal year twenty twenty one is about four hundred thousand dollars, and over the listed projects you saw on the prior slide, over the next five years, will amount to an additional two million dollars of revenue inflow to the county of El Paso. Next slide. So I'm going to present to you, not this whole grocery list, but some of the significant changes in the general administrative budget and some of the reasoning behind some of those significant changes. Near the top of the screen, our health and life increase is the county's portion of the new share of the rate structure that was proposed and approved by your risk pool board, and that you will hear about later today from Mr. San Trujillo. That would be an effective change on January first of twenty twenty one, and would amount to just over one point three million dollars. The reduction of two point eight million dollars below the current amended budget for salary adjustments is because we're budgeting just the collective bargaining wage increase for fiscal year twenty twenty one as contractually required. Following a little bit lower, keeping travel and training as being recommended at its current reduced level, the court did reduce travel training and suspended budget in April of twenty twenty for, for the fiscal year twenty twenty cost control purposes. This recommended budget would still allow for you to meet your legislative travel needs and some of your basic mandated travel and training. There is a suggested one point two million dollar reduction in our contract services. This is mostly due to the completion of the jail study, which was about a half a million dollars. You'll be hearing a presentation from Public Works later during the month. We no longer need to fund in this account three hundred and seventy thousand dollars related to the census, and we also shifted the lobbyist contract out of this line item to a specific lobbying light item as required by legislatively last year. That was a hundred and sixty eight thousand dollar move. Other changes to note on this slide, nine thousand dollar increase in legal settlements, as suggested and recommended by our legal counsel, and a one point six million dollar reduction in capital contributions to our capital improvement fund. Lastly, any, the most material item on this slide remaining is a one million dollar increase in grant matches, for which the detail will be provided to you shortly by a member of my staff. Next slide, please. These are other major departmental changes within the general fund. This slide will provide you with those other additional significant changes. It's been highlighted, a number of these have been highlighted throughout this morning's presentation, such as our El Paso County Mobility Fund at the bottom of the slide at four point seven million dollars. Economic development and incentive and departmental changes totaling just over one point six million dollars. Various changes throughout the budget to our utility accounts, we base that off of an internal analysis with utility utilization. We have increases to our mental health guardianship program amounting to about three hundred and fifty thousand dollars for the contract that you awarded in the spring. Hundred and eleven thousand dollar increase for our city-county health contract, just to highlight a few of these. Next slide, please. Jail metal and mental health, the budget for fiscal year twenty twenty was ten point three million dollars. Expenditures to date and projected through the end of the fiscal year are estimated to come in at about nine point three million dollars, or ninety one percent of the appropriated budget. We do have some pending capital expenditures that we will carry into fiscal year twenty twenty one in accordance with the contractual agreement to meet the operating needs of our hospital district and their, and their staff that is working in the jails, and will also be transferring out of the jail healthcare account any related COVID expenses. Through the month of June, just so you're aware, we incurred about seventy seven hundred dollars of specific COVID-related costs through our contract with U M C. That'll be transferred out of the general fund into the CARES Act grant, and thereafter, we will transfer that on a monthly basis until such time that we have met the termination of the grant, allowability timeframe. Any questions before I proceed with the next few funds? All right, hearing none, I'm going to go into the next slides and review with you Capital Projects, Debt Service, Special Revenue, and the Enterprise Fund, and then we'll, a member of my staff will close out this presentation with a grant overview before she hands it over to our Human Resource Team. With eight million dollars proposed in the fiscal year two thousand sixteen budget is one point six below last year's, you'll be hearing in our department budget scenario presentation later this morning that we will be recommending you consider deferring the allocation until we get closer to the end of the second quarter of twenty twenty one, middle of March or early, middle of February or early March, so we can assess the financial impacts that we are currently undergoing and may continue to undergo resulting from COVID nineteen. Majority of this comes.
Can I interrupt you?
Yes, sir. Absolutely.
This is Commissioner Stowe. Can you go back to the, the slide thirty four?
Yes, sir.
So on, on a general fund, you, you have elections postage is, is, there's a reduction in a hundred and thirty two, a hundred and thirty two thousand dollars. Can you tell me what, what, what that, what that's about?
Yes, sir. So this is one of our cyclical expenses.
I don't know, I don't know if we're planning on spending money on, on sending out, you know, notices to people or, or mail-in ballots to people. I know that it's something that, I don't know if we've, we've gotten into a lot of depth talking about that, but, and, and, and I've also seen that there's like rumblings on the, in the, within the post, within the, the United States Postal Service that they're going to be charging for, for folks to be sending out those types of mail-in ballots across the country. It's going to, the, the cost is going to go up probably double for mailing those out. So I don't know if those are considerations we're, we're dealing, we're taking into account with, with that, with that fund and, and saying we're going to be spending less.
Two comments in response to that request, Commissioner. Number one, this is our general fund expenses for our, which are cyclical in nature. Every two years, we, the voter registration cards are mailed out to the public. Those were received this year and are not required to mail out for fiscal year twenty twenty one. In response to the mail-in voting request, that is an item that we have programmed within our CARES Act funding. So that is taken into consideration budgetarily out of our CARES Act grant.
Okay, thank you. Thank you for the, thank you for the clarification. Appreciate it.
Yes, sir. If you'll go to slide thirty seven, Miguel. As a reminder, capital projects funds are all-year funds, which means they're budgeted in the original year of appropriation. Those budgets carry forward until either they're fully exhausted or the project is closed. This slide provides you with historical expenses up through the fiscal year two thousand nineteen. It has the current twenty twenty and twenty twenty one proposed budgets. Our spending has and will continue to increase throughout the next year, and you'll see we, future estimates will reflect current progress made in both facility acquisitions downtown, improvements to those facilities in the downtown area, our parks, and our county airport improvements, as noted by Mr. Landeros earlier in his presentation. So you will see those expenses in fiscal year twenty climbing. That is just our annual budget, and they're all-year budgets.
And F Y twenty one will also be higher than what's shown. This is just an initial budget, but there will be additional expenses in F Y twenty one that are paid from the existing bond funds, such as the improvements that are made at the Fabens Airport, all the improvements to the Raymond Tayis Building.
Correct. Thank you, Ms. Keller. Overall request, this is a review for your twenty twenty one capital request. Overall request in fiscal year twenty one were just over forty two million dollars, ten million of which fall more accordingly into the bond category due to the nature of the request. Twenty-two and a half million dollars of requests were eligible for consideration. In addition to eight point eight million dollars, that fell into the category of ongoing replacement, which I'll tell you what types of items those are shortly. In the middle of this slide, you'll also see how the eight million dollar allocation this year is being recommended to be allocated. In the middle of this slide, you'll also see how the eight million dollar allocation this year is being recommended to be allocated, four point two million dollars to uh new C I P. Three million dollars being uh recommended for ongoing replacement, and then we've left a contingency of uh eight hundred thousand dollars or ten percent for any price variations that come in based off of bids. Under this current model, we're meeting just over thirty percent of the request. Next slide, please. Uh this is merely a pictorial representation of how those requests looked as a percentage by type. As you can see, these fall into the categories of facilities and infrastructure as the largest component, followed by fleet and information technology. This just illustrates the demand of the type of assets by category that we use in our day-to-day operations. Next slide. This is just a list of the items that are typically uh in the ongoing replacement category and strategy. Those include just a few highlights of your computers, printers and and laptops. Both handheld and in-vehicle radios, your heating and cooling units, um enhancements to our light decorations at Escarate. Specialty paving projects that was discussed earlier in the presentation, park improvements and sidewalks, to name a few. We also allocate uh funding for any new positions um in in the C I P as well. Uh which this year, uh we have no earmarks for any new positions to date. Next slide, please. This slide is an overview of a by department of the recommended C I P penny annual allocation that you will approve with the consider for adoption with the um approved budget. I would like, uh this just illustrates how that four point two million dollars is being recommended to allocate, majority going to Public Works at one point three million dollars, a million to facilities. Uh four hundred thousand to uh Council of Judges, another four hundred thousand dollars to the Sheriff's Department, a quarter million to J P D. And then a various sprinkling throughout other departments with in the county. I would like to take this time to recognize your capital team who works very closely with county administration uh to develop these recommendations. That's Mr. Christathus from I T, Hopton from your Fleet Management. Uh Norma Rivera Palacios from Public Works, of course, the infamous Ms. Keller, who leads this group. Um Melissa. Uh Carillo from Human Resources, Tom Whitten from the jail. Uh behind the scenes, we have Victor Perez from the Auditor's Office who keeps us on track with our reconciliations and availability of funding. And um Danielle Chavez from my office keeps us all in a very organized type timeline. Um any questions before I proceed with the debt service account?
Quite a team. I don't know about the infamous Betsy, but the.
I meant to say infamous.
Thank you. Thank you.
Next, next slide, please. Uh this line chart just illustrates our current annual debt obligation for both principal uh and interest. Your interest line is at the bottom. You can see our interest sliding down through the end of time. Our principal has very uh various peaks and valleys until we pay our debt off in twenty thirty-five. Um as noted during our quarterly overviews you've received throughout the year and presented by our uh financial advisor that we work closely with to present this for you. We will have an opportunity uh for uh the consideration of by the court of a bond issuance. Probably in excess of a hundred million dollars uh range with little or no change to the I N S portion of the tax rate. That that's attributable to two things. That's paying down our debt and a and a significant drop-off in our debt schedule in twenty twenty-three. As well as um some assumptions for property value growth into the future, which um may have to be adjusted resulting from any action that was discussed with you from Central Appraisal District this morning. Next slide, please. Uh these two tables just provides you uh with a takeaway that these charts illustrate that the county is uh both well below not only the legal debt limit of five percent of oppressed uh assessed property. Sorry, my coworkers are barking. Um our legal debt limit statutorily is five percent of assessed value with a forty-four billion dollar property value. The county has the legal authority to issue debt up to two point two billion dollars. But we are far below um that um limit. Separate and apart from that, you have adopted in your financial policies a debt limit of uh further restrictive um uh at our own discretion of two percent. Uh that two percent uh cap totals eight hundred and ninety million dollars. So with outstanding debt below a hundred and seventy million dollars, we are far below both our policy uh recommendation. Um and and guidance for debt as well as well below ten percent of our legal authority to issue debt. Next slide, please. Um El Paso, I apologize for the sizes. I tried to size it up, but couldn't get it much bigger than this. Um El Paso County, uh as reported by the Bond Review Board, uh report shows that it's amongst uh that amongst counties of similar size. We have the lowest per capita debt. Oh, thank you for zooming that up, team. We've got a great team behind the scenes. Um. The Texas Association of Counties reports that counties as a whole across the state make up only about six percent of bonded debt in Texas local governments. School districts uh leading the state uh followed by cities. So you'll see ours right in the middle there. Uh at as the date of this report at a hundred and seventy-two million dollars, which was um it's over a year old. Uh we were um had the lowest per capita debt at two hundred and five dollars uh amongst counties of similar size. Uh we also receive uh generally, uh every time we have a review from our bonding agencies, that's typically an area that is highlighted that can the county of El Paso has a very manageable debt level. Next slide, please. Uh the next few slides are going to provide you with an overview of the remaining fund within the county budget. Uh special revenues as titled. Uh our our special revenues because they are set from revenue generated from fees that may only be used for a specific or special purpose. Uh they are authorized and dictated by statute. Um staff in my office work with each elected and appointed office on these budgets. And they are all balanced from the revenue and fund balances that are certified from the county auditor. I will have you note that was as the last as of the last revenue estimate. My team is working behind the scenes as we speak today. Rebalancing those special revenues and the recap will be presented to you with the final uh proposed budget. Um major change in special revenues I'll highlight in the next slide, but I would like to bring to your attention the Road and Bridge Fund um utilized is accounted for with fees received from vehicle registrations. Which proceeds are used to construct and repave county roads and bridges, from which you received that presentation this morning from uh Ms. Rivera Palacios team. These funds uh still this account and this fund still requires an alternate source of funding. And in fiscal year twenty twenty-one, we are transferring a little over two four million dollars from the general fund into the Road and Bridge Fund. And the recommendation will be to continue to grow this transfer up to at least the equivalent of the auto sales tax. Um anyone who's familiar with legislative changes that have taken place over the last um fourteen to sixteen years, that statute was changed and those auto sales taxes were slowly. Transferred out of the Road and Bridge Fund where they previously uh were recognized into the general fund. So we've been growing this trend. We've established this uh uh transfer out and will propose to grow this transfer out in the future years to be no less than the equivalent of the auto sales tax. Is there a question? Okay, um next slide, please. Uh this is a recap of the change uh within the special revenue funds that that is under our current review criteria fifty thousand or five percent. As you can see at the top of this table, the most significant downward trend. Is occurring in our hotel occupancy tax funded accounts, both in the county coliseum and our contract with the Sports Commission. And with the county tourist promotion fund, which receives the remainder of the excess hot taxes that are collected. Uh the most significant movement upward and within special revenues, as noted, is the Road and Bridge Fund, uh which is indicated at the bottom of this chart, growing by about two million dollars. Next slide, please. Uh this slide provides you with a recap of this suggested twenty twenty-one tourist promotion funding. Uh these allocations come from. The net hot tax collections that remained after our contractual requirements with the El Paso Sports Commission. Uh that contract uh has been amended this year. Uh will come to closure next year and we will uh look at the process um from a matter of policy, how the court wishes to continue to operate that facility. And also receive the results of the findings of our uh facility study as well. As a reminder, this contract, um oh, I already talked to you about the contract being amended uh for the declaration of an emergency. One item in the middle of this chart you'll see is for Casa Ronquillo. Uh the design and planning for Casa Ronquillo is completed and the facility remodel and improvements will take place during uh fiscal year twenty-one. We will watch this account very closely as additional impacts related to the pandemic may require us to uh adjust this account um in the near future. So this is one that if we had to do an adjustment and and move this account downwards. Your line that's five up from the bottom that says ops contingency would be the account that you have a uh great ability to adjust accordingly. Uh based on the change in revenues uh that we result in receiving from the pandemic. Next slide, please. So this is our last other major fund, uh which is our enterprise fund. Uh as a reminder, we're currently under negotiations with the El Paso Water Utility Utility for the consideration of transitioning this water system over to the utility. Uh the enterprise fund is used to account for the operation of the water and sewer system. The proposed budget is currently four point one million dollars, eight million dollars less than this year. That's mostly attributable to one-time grant projects that were in fiscal years two thousand nineteen and twenty. Do I have any questions here on the presentation to date before I turn this over to Ms. Erica Ortega from Grant? I'd like to thank you very much, Commissioners, and with that, I would like to introduce Ms. Erica Ortega, who will give you an overview of grant funding for fiscal year twenty twenty and our recommended matches.
Thank you, Wally. Good morning, Judge and Commissioners. Erica Ortega with Grants Administration. As Wally mentioned, I will be presenting to you an overview of El Paso County grant funding for FY twenty thus far, as well as match funding preparation for FY twenty-one. This slide that you're looking at summarizes grant-funded personnel through the end of the third quarter of FY twenty. On average, the county typically has a hundred and twenty grant-funded employees, give or take a few. At the end of the third quarter, we had a hundred and twenty-one grant-funded employees within ten different county departments. A hundred sixteen of these positions are a hundred percent grant-funded and include positions such as trial attorneys, probation officers. Licensed counselors or therapists, detectives and crime victim specialists or advocates. During the first three quarters of FY twenty, the amount of grant funding expended on grant-funded county employees was almost nine million dollars. At this time, the county has a hundred and twenty-two grant-funded positions, which means one grant-funded position was added in the last month. So you'll see this number fluctuates very little from month to month. A hundred and seventeen of these positions are a hundred percent grant-funded. And twenty-six different grants are paying for these employees' salaries. Nineteen of these grants fund only one to three employees, while three different grants fund about six employees each. The last four grants fund a significant number of employees. One grant has nine employees, one has eleven employees, another has sixteen employees, while the last funds thirty-two employees. And and this grant that has thirty-two employees may have different initiatives within the grant. So as you can see, the number of employees funded by these grants can vary greatly. It would be difficult to determine the financial impact of any of these grants not being funded in the coming fiscal year without knowing exactly what grant you're working with. Although we hope to continue to receive these grant awards and continue to fund every one of these positions. Grants Administration is working closely with the Budget Division to plan for reductions in grant funding if any of these grants are not awarded in FY twenty-one. I will discuss these plans in a later slide for you all. Next slide, please. The county currently has ninety-three active grants, and this pie chart shows a breakdown of state and federal funding that makes up these active awards. These numbers do not represent exact monies the county has or will receive from grantor agencies in FY twenty. But reflect total award amounts for active grants and any grants that have opened or closed during FY twenty. I would also like to note that the federal awards in the pie chart have been adjusted, so it does not include the twenty-seven million dollar allocation the county received. Through the CARES Act Coronavirus Relief Fund for local governments. Next slide, please. Active federal awards are worth almost thirteen million dollars. Again, this number does not include CARES Act funding. The county has received from the Treasury in the amount of twenty-seven million dollars. As you look at the pie chart, you will see the Executive Office of the President and the Department of Justice combined. Represent ninety-three percent of the federal share of active county grants during FY twenty. Next slide, please. Active state awards are worth about twenty-seven million dollars. Of this amount, you'll see text dot and the Governor's Office grants combined make up almost eighteen million dollars. Or three-quarters of the active state awards during FY twenty. Next slide, please. So every fiscal year, Grants Administration, along with various departments, work on submitting grant applications to state, federal and miscellaneous grantor agencies. Sixty-two grant applications were initiated by the county during the first three quarters of FY twenty. These grant applications included both new and renewal grant opportunities. In addition, as our Grants Administration Division and Budget Division assist our county departments with grants. We are cognizant of the match that is required for each grant application in the case of an award. As such, ninety percent of these sixty-two grant applications initiated required twenty-five percent program match or less. Next slide, please. As previously mentioned, sixty-two grant applications were initiated by the county during the first three quarters of FY twenty. Of these grant applications, twenty-two have already been awarded and will begin this fiscal year or at the beginning of next fiscal year. While we have eight grants with anticipated award, which means we anticipate the awards coming through, gosh, probably more than ninety-nine percent. Um so we're we're happy for that. Twenty-eight grant applications are currently pending, as many of the applications submitted this fiscal year are in preparation for next fiscal year. We have to keep in mind that the grant applications the county submits every year are a combination of formula grants and competitive grants. Therefore, some are guaranteed while others are very, very competitive at both the state and national level. Next slide, please. This slide discusses annual ongoing or what we would call renewal grant match funding and compares FY twenty departmental general admin grant match amounts. To what the county has budgeted for an FY twenty-one general admin match. Looking at both columns, you will notice some of the grant match amounts have increased, decreased, or remain the same from FY twenty to FY twenty-one. And in the next slide, I will provide a list of new grants that will contribute significantly to overall potential match for next fiscal year. Next slide, please. Okay, so as mentioned, this last slide provides a table of anticipated grant match for FY twenty-one for new grants. Some of the grants listed here have already received awards, while others are pending award or may not receive award. Some very significant match amounts in this table are for the reentry program, which requires half a million in match alone. While the hazard mitigation project requires eight hundred thousand, which may be split over the life of the grant period, which is three years. In addition, match funding for parks and recreation projects for Escarate, Gallegos, Risinger and the Square Dance Linear Park account for three-quarters of a million dollars. Again, some of these grants have received award while others are still in a pending status. The top line of the table shows a five hundred thousand dollar fund amount that has been reserved for new grants. Departments may apply for during FY twenty-one. The Budget and Fiscal Policy Department is also preparing for contingency funding. Out of the general admin account in the amount of a quarter of a million dollars for the court to consider in the case that a grant is not awarded. Should the county choose to pick up applicable costs of the program and or the staffing. In the case of an ongoing grant program not receiving funding for any reason in FY twenty-one. Our Grants Administration team is currently working on an evaluation matrix tool for our grant programs. That will help the county assess the impact of the program. And help Commissioners Court determine if such costs can be picked up by the county general admin funds. Lastly, the Grants Administration Division continues to work closely with the Budget Division and the County Auditor's Office. To account for all potential match requirements this coming fiscal year. At the time of every grant award, we always revisit grant matches with our Budget Division as well as Wally to ensure we are fiscally prepared for the match requirements. Well, that brings my presentation to a close. Um thank you for allowing me to present. Uh please let me know if there are any questions or comments.
You made it, Judge.
Judge, I think you're silent.
Don't meet it, sir.
Oh, standby, Judge.
Judge, you're still.
Standby, please.
Hello.
There, okay, we hear you. Go ahead, sir.
There.
Okay, there you go. Thank you. No, just Erica, I just wanted to be, just, I'm not sure people understand the, how all these grants help us and compensate for a lot of the initiatives and the projects. And since you came on board, I mean, it's just amazing what comes to our table, our way of offsetting, and also, I mean, just things that we would probably never be able to accomplish without the grants. And a lot of the ones that we don't match, some that we do match, but just the opportunity to get into some initiatives that would never come about. So just want to, I hope the public understands the effort that our Grants Department and everything that happens in order to achieve, you know, and lower our costs, obviously, and be able to do some of the things, accessibility and things that are very difficult to do with just taxpayers' money, but this funding sources that you're able to achieve and address, and then bring to our table, and then help others in other departments that need your help. Also, you know, we've offered our Grants Department to help some of the rural communities to see if they could reach out, if they need any help through the grant process because of the amazing experience that you all have in your department. So I just want to thank you, and like I said, just want to recognize that a lot has to happen to achieve those grants. Some of them are very time-sensitive and very intense, and you've done everything possible to make sure that we do have those grants available to us. So thank you very much for that.
Great, thank you, Judge.
Commissioner Leon, please.
Thank you, Judge. I just have a quick question on that chart that you have up right now. Sun Metro helping obtain property for everyone, what is that?
I'm sorry, let me pull that up. My screen is a little bit blurry. Sun Metro. Okay, so this is a grant, and I'm sure Jose could speak to this a little bit more thoroughly, but I believe this is a Public Works. Let me see.
Is it for right-of-way for the bus stops, Erica?
I believe so. Is it that grant? Let me see. Is it the grant in the amount of $24,200?
Yes.
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 Yes, I believe so. So Betsy, if you can speak to that more clearly, some of the grants, there are so many grants that I may get a very, very broad overview of the grants.
I don't want to misspeak because I'm not as much of an expert on it as Sal and Jose, but Commissioner, I can definitely get you that answer.
Yes.
Okay, it just caught my eye to see what that's all about. So yeah, I'd appreciate it, and maybe you can just send it to the entire court. Thank you.
Sure, we will do that.
Thank you, Erica.
Thank you. Okay, if there are no more questions at this time, I'd like to hand it over to Melissa Carrio with Human Resources, so she may begin her presentation. Have a good day.
Thank you.
Thank you, Erica.
Good morning, Melissa.
Thanks. Good morning, Judge. Thank you, Ms. Erica. Good morning, Judge. Good morning, Commissioners. Melissa Carrio with Human Resources. This morning, we have quite a few slides of updated information for you all to receive. Throughout the past few months, our team has provided various informational updates as it pertains to our FY21 budget. But this morning, we'd like to present some key updates to that information, as well as some recommendations as we move to adopting our FY21 budget. Those slides will include information on benefits, on staffing changes, liability, compensation, and some program requests. With that, I'm going to turn it over to our first presenter, Mr. Sam Traheal, who will lead us in a benefits discussion.
Thank you, Melissa. Good morning, Judge, Commissioners. Sam Traheal, I'm the Senior Deputy Human Resources Officer for the County of El Paso. A couple of months ago, our benefits team provided the Commissioners Court with a detailed mid-year status report on the county's self-insured medical plan. During that meeting, we also reported on proposed changes and new programs that were recommended by the county's Risk Pool Board for Plan Year 2021. Today, our team would like to provide the court with four slides that highlight the plan design and new programs for 2021. We have also updated our proposed premium rates for, and the county contribution recommendations from our June presentation, based on the trends that we have experienced over the last few months. So before we go into the slides, I would like to update the court on the current status of our Risk Pool Fund. Not yet, not yet on the slide. Before we go into the slides, I would like to update the court on the current status of our Risk Pool Reserve Fund and the contingency plan we presented to the court earlier this year. So on April 20th of this year, our staff notified the court through an agenda report and through a presentation about the activation of our contingency plan. This contingency plan was activated based on a decline in our reserve funding, due not only to an increase in medical claims, but also to the elimination of the BIA plan, the upfront costs that we saw with the Health Savings Account incentive, the waiver of the 90-day service waiting period, the increase that we saw in telemedicine or Teladoc services. And then we had federal mandates that required 100% coverage on certain COVID-19-related services. So we provided the court with multiple options, which included mid-year premium increases, elimination of spousal coverage, reducing pre-65 retirees' medical plan subsidy, potential elimination of the core plan, or a $1.8 million infusion at that time. The court did not take any action at that time, but we later discussed in a special meeting in late April about preparing for a $1.5 million infusion if it became necessary. As part of our contingency plan, we have been providing the court weekly updates on the level of our reserve fund, based on the increase in claims expenses that we have been experiencing during this pandemic, including over 300 claims that were specifically related to COVID-19. The weekly reports, they changed dramatically due to claims being paid weekly and revenue from premiums occurring bi-weekly with payroll. So we're very careful not to make any dramatic changes based on weekly reports. However, we have recently seen a drop in our reserve funding to under $1 million, which places us at a critical level of our contingency plan. And it also triggered notification to our Budget Department to secure a potential mid-year infusion. So in our latest meeting between Human Resources and our health consultants and our Budget Department, we are projecting that our reserves will end the year in the positive, but we will remain at a critical level. We believe that it is prudent for us, though, to recommend a mid-year infusion from contingency funds. We have reduced the infusion recommendation we provided to the court from $1.8 million to $1 million, based on our latest data and plan. And we plan on bringing this request to the Commissioners Court in the next couple of weeks during the regular Commissioners Court session. So I wanted to bring this issue to the court's attention so that you're aware of the status of the reserve fund while you consider the plan changes for 2021. So with that, I'd like to now ask our Benefits Manager, Verenice Acosta, to present the recommended plan changes for Plan Year 2021.
Thank you, Sam. Good morning, Judge. Good morning, Commissioners. Verenice Acosta with the Human Resources. Throughout the past few months, we have been meeting with the county's Risk Pool Board to discuss changes to our health plan for the 2021 calendar year. And on this slide, you will see the plan options that are part of our current plan, which we will be recommending to continue for Plan Year 2021. During the last year's budget sessions, the court approved the elimination of the BIA plan for the current plan year, and we have successfully migrated those employees to one of our two existing plans, which are the Core Plan and the Consumer Driven Health Plan. Currently, we have 59 of our employees in the Core Plan, while 41% are with the CDHP. We continue to offer four tiers, which are employee-only, employee and spouse, employee and children, and employee and family. Finally, under our wellness program, it does operate with two wellness coordinators, one of which is funded by Aetna, and one that is funded by the Risk Pool Fund. Our Risk Pool also covers $100,000 each year to be used specifically for our wellness activities. And our employees are also eligible for health insurance premium discounts when participating in various wellness programs and events. We are recommending the continuation of these plans, tiers, and the wellness program for Plan Year 2021. Also on this slide, you will see new options, which were previously discussed and presented during the mid-year report. These options include the High Performance and Narrow Networks, which we are developing for Plan Year 2022. The new or updated programs we are asking the court to approve for Plan Year 2021 include the Dental Network and the Telemedicine in Mexico, and the incentive for the High Deductible Plan, which I will discuss in more detail in the next slide. Next slide, please. On this slide, you will see the various Health Savings Account, County Contribution Options for members who are in or transferred to the CDHP with an HSA. A quick history on this contribution, in 2016, we implemented a $600 incentive for employees who were on or transferred to the CDHP and enrolled in the HSA. We offered the $600 incentive again for 2017, and then increased it to $1,200 in 2018. For Plan Year 2018, we saw a 61% increase into the CDHP. We went from approximately 290 employees enrolled in the CDHP in 2016 to over 1,000 today. Therefore, we have reached the goal of increasing participation in the High Deductible Plan, which is more cost-effective for both the county and for employees. However, in light of our financial situation this year, we are providing the court with other contribution options to consider for Plan Year 2021. So option number one is to continue with the $1,200 contribution, which is at a cost of approximately $1.2 million. Option two is the $900 contribution with a little over $900,000 in cost. Option three is the $600 contribution with a cost of approximately a little over $600,000. Option four is the $300 contribution with a little over $300,000 in cost. And option five is no contribution. These options were also presented to the Risk Pool Board, which voted to recommend a reduction in the incentive by 50% for Plan Year 2021, which is the $600 contribution listed under option number three. These options also have an impact on premiums, which I would like to discuss further in the next slide. Next slide, please. Based on the court approving the $600 HSA contribution incentive, and based on the current data with a mid-year infusion, staff is recommending a 15.97% premium increase, which represents a little more than half a percent increase from our presentation in June. This premium increase will result in approximately $1.9 million county contribution over a 12-month period, or an approximate $1.3 million contribution for the nine-month budget period. On the next slide, I would like to give a quick overview of the impact to the employee premium rates. Thank you. On this slide, you will see the Core and the CDHP premium comparison without the employee discounts. The premiums listed here are on a bi-weekly basis. The increase represents a 73 cent increase per pay period for employee-only in the CDHP, and a $51.55 increase for an employee in the Core Plan under the Employee and Family tier. As a reminder, employees will still be eligible for a total of a 6% premium discount for completing certain wellness incentives. At this point, does the court have any questions before we proceed?
Thank you. Go ahead.
With, thank you. With that, I will turn it over to Valeria Fernandez, HR Manager, who will provide an update on staffing changes and a few recommendations.
Good morning, Judge, Commissioners. Valeria Fernandez with the Human Resources Department. Over the next few slides, I will be updating you on staffing changes. We briefed you on some of these items in the June special meeting. This section will cover two areas. First, a review of specialty requests, and second, these positions, those positions which are currently under the GADMAN account. Next slide, please. In this first section, I will provide updates on two specialty requests previously approved by the court. As you remember, a few years ago, the court approved five court clerk positions for the District Clerk's Office. The purpose of these positions is to assist with the OCA Data Cleanup Project, which is expected to be completed by the end of FY20. Our District Clerk has assured us that this project will be completed by the end of this fiscal year. We have been working to place these employees into other county positions by September 30th, 2020, which will leave these positions vacant. As a result, we recommend these five vacant positions be eliminated from the staffing table in FY21, resulting in a savings to the county of approximately $250,000. Additionally, the court invested in their constable offices last year. Five constable offices received new administrative specialists in intermediate positions. This approval was made in an effort to transfer the administrative work of the deputies so that they may focus more intently on law enforcement duties. We have been working with the constables to submit quarterly staffing justification forms to ensure the goal of these positions is met. We ask that the positions continue to be funded and held to the same justification process any other new county position is subjected to. Should anything change as we review these forms, we will bring any necessary changes to the court's attention at that time. Next slide, please. This slide shows you the positions which are currently under the GADMAN account, which had been pending analysis and action. Last year, the court transferred one court clerk intermediate position from JP 61 to JP 1. However, this position was funded by GADMAN pending a recommendation. Further, over the prior few years, we have been watching six juvenile case manager positions that the county funds within its JP courts. The positions are placed in the GADMAN account in light of the legislative change which occurred a few years ago. As you may remember, effective 2016, there was an update to the Texas Juvenile Truancy Statute, which changed the way that juvenile truancy cases are handled. While this statute update didn't change the workload, it did shift where the workload originates. In the past, truancy cases were filed directly between the schools and the JP courts. Since the statute changed, these cases are now filed with the DA's office and processed through the JP courts as necessary. Our office, together with the JP courts and the DA's office, have been reviewing the data and impact of these changes, and would like to share some of that data with you at this time. Next slide, please. Excuse me. This slide shows truancy cases from FY12 until FY20 year-to-date. As you can see, the number of cases were drastically reduced after statute changed in January 2016. Each color represents one of the JP courts. As you can see, all truancy cases across the precincts declined significantly. Next slide, please. This slide represents all juvenile cases by court. JP courts hear juvenile cases to include truancy, as well as other other civil and criminal-type cases, such as transportation code, curfew violations, and tobacco cases. Each section on this graph represents a different JP court, and the colors represent a different. Each section on this graph represents a different JP court, and the colors represent a different year. Again, you will see that the cases dipped since truancy was removed in twenty sixteen, which is represented by the green lines.
Judge, Commissioners, if I could just expand on what um Valeria is presenting on juvenile cases. Currently, Joel and Jacob Miles are doing more research on this and working with the they will, they are presenting this information to the justices of the peace to make them aware and to give them opportunities to provide feedback and not just on their juvenile cases, but on all types of cases overall. So we will continue to do studies related to this. I know Val is specifically addressing this for the juvenile case managers, but I want to make sure the court knows we are continuing to work on juvenile, I'm sorry, justice of the peace cases overall, and we plan to bring those back um within FY twenty-two for further discussion. Sorry, go ahead, Val.
Thank you, Betsy. Next slide, please. This slide shows the overall clearance rates for each JP court since twenty sixteen, and the colors represent a different year. One significant change we noticed is a positive direction of the overall clearance rates for each JP court in general. Since the shift of the truancy case initiation to the DA's office, most JP courts have seen an increase in their clearance rates. We believe this is attributable to the fact that the juvenile case manager position is able to assist in other areas of the court, which has contributed to the increased clearance rates. Also, an upcoming legislative change, Senate Bill twenty-three forty-two, which is effective September one, twenty twenty, increases the jurisdiction of the JP courts in civil matters from ten thousand to twenty thousand, which could have an impact on the amount of incoming cases to the JP courts. With SB twenty-three forty-two and the anticipated increase in case volume in the JP courts, the help of the juvenile case manager resource will continue to be warranted. Next slide, please. Finally, as a result of our analysis, uh which include reviewing this data and meeting with the JPs and the DA's office, our office is recommending a few changes. With regard to the court clerk intermediate position currently assigned to JP one and funded by Gadman, we are recommending this position be transferred officially to the JP one budget as we expect the increase in civil cases to fully support the additional resource. With regard to the six juvenile case manager positions, we are recommending the court reclassify these positions to a court clerk intermediate position and transfer them back to their respective budgets. This will allow these positions to continue helping with juvenile cases as they come in, but also allows them to work on other civil and criminal case cases as well. We plan on modifying the court clerk intermediate job description to include the juvenile casework. Further, we want to create a Kronos transfer pay code, which will help these court clerk positions track time spent on juvenile casework. This is important as juvenile case management funds can be used to partially fund the salaries of those staff members who are assigned to handle juvenile cases. Next slide, please. Are there any questions at this time? If not, I'll go ahead and pass on to the next presenter, our deputy HR officer, Michelle Cochrane.
Good morning, Judge and Commissioners. Michelle Cochrane with the Human Resources Department. I will now be presenting the liability section of our budget proposal, which encompasses property insurance, liability insurance, and the administrative accountability policy. Next slide, please. Each year, the county reviews its various insurance policies and rates proposed by vendors to ensure that we have sufficient coverage and funding. HR manages six insurance policies that you can see on the screen, which include auto, property, crime, cybercrime, drone, and special events coverages. Each increase in premium is identified on the slide. As you can see, property insurance represents the largest increase in premiums, and it does include a premium reduction for the property parking lot on Arizona that the county sold to EPI SD, and it does include the premium increase for the Raymond Tyes Building on Campbell, which was acquired by the county. Overall, liability results in a total cost of three hundred sixty-four thousand eight hundred and eight dollars, which represents a twenty-three thousand eight hundred sixty-six dollar budget increase for FY twenty-one. Next slide, please. The next area that we'll cover is the accountability policy. Later in this meeting, we do have an executive session item posted to discuss violations of the policy that occurred this year. As a reminder, the purpose of this policy is to ensure strong dialogue with our departments. I will providing assistance to them on employee relations matters. This assistance is provided through us, the HR department, in conjunction with the county attorney's office in an effort to minimize exposure to liability in these situations. In situations where an elected official does not heed the guidance or advice of HR and the county attorneys, after such advice has been provided and where those decisions result in liability to the county, HR brings you an executive session item, which is followed by a chief administrative notice, a committee meeting, and then finally, these items are brought back to you annually during budget review. Slide, please. Should there not be any questions on these items, Natalia Chaparro will review the compensation and program request updates at this time.
Thank you.
Thank you, Michelle. Good morning, Judge and Commissioners. Natalia Chaparro with Human Resources. Over the next few slides, I will be sharing information on the Suther East Supplements and the Vanpool Program. Next slide, please. In accordance with the supplemental stipends policy, supplemental stipends are wages paid to qualifying positions in addition to the regular base salary. These positions must be asserted requirements such as distinct certifications or licensing, specialized assignments, and/or specialized expertise. Further, the county positions, the positions must be driven by county policy, statutory authority, or reimbursed to the county at a hundred percent. Currently, we have thirty-three positions receiving salary supplements, and of the total, ten percent fall under the a hundred percent reimbursable criteria and approximately ninety percent are due to the statutory authority. The slide before you has been updated from the last month's budget presentation, as it now includes AgriLife, and the total has been updated slightly to what you see in the slide, to three hundred twenty-three thousand eight hundred and ninety-four dollars. Next slide, please. This slide shows the drill down by each department. As the court is aware, although the district attorney's supplement stipends are driven by statutory authority, per chapter fifty-nine of the Code of Criminal Procedure, the court must take action and approve the amount under its authority. The amount for the district attorneys has changed slightly from what you see in the slide to a hundred and thirty-eight thousand seven hundred and two, out of which a hundred and twenty thousand four hundred and fifty fall under the court's authority and does require action. As the court is also aware, this year is a transition period for the district attorney, which means that the hundred and twenty thousand that I mentioned earlier may be subject to change. The court does have a few options on how to move forward. You may budget the full amount, the hundred and twenty thousand four hundred and fifty, or you may budget a prodded amount until the end of the year, which allows the district attorney to fulfill one of its biannual supplement payouts, which occur in December and June. Our office can definitely come back prior to the June twenty twenty-one payout and present to the court the second part of the supplements. If no questions or discussions on the salary supplements, I'll move on to the next slide, please. The Vanpool subsidy program. So the county of El Paso, we offer its employees a carpool program called Vanmonos Vanpool. This program allows a group of four to fifteen coworkers who live near one another to form a vanpool and commute to work. And by commuting to work, our employees would save on gas, cart maintenance, parking, and other expenses. The program was initiated last year when the court approved a subsidy in the amount of a little over twenty thousand dollars during the FY twenty budget hearings. The goal was to have at least thirty county employees participate in this program. Next slide, please. Once the court approved the subsidy, our team worked hard on various marketing efforts. We distributed flyers, provided information to employees during open enrollment, we had videos and flyers on the internet, and we also had Vanpool representatives at our health fairs to distribute and share information. Unfortunately, we did not have any employees join this program in twenty twenty. And now with the pandemic and forty percent of our workforce currently engaging in telework, it is difficult to determine if we will have a renewed interest for fiscal year twenty-one. If the court is interested in pursuing this program for another year, and if the budget includes this amount, we will continue with our marketing efforts and education efforts. In speaking with our Vanpool representatives, they have assured us that they continue to provide critical transportation for individuals providing essential services, and they are taking the proper steps to ensure the safety and the continuous sanitation of their vehicles. If there are no questions on salary supplements or Vanpool program, I will now turn it over to our Chief Human Resources Officer, Melissa Carrillo.
Thank you.
Judge Commissioners, again, Melissa Carrillo. Thank you, Natalia. Um regarding our employee compensation and our minimum wage, as you recall, a year ago, our court invested in their workforce by adjusting our pay scales by four point one percent to assess with elevating the minimum wage of our county employees. Due to its efforts last year, our new minimum wage is twelve dollars and five cents per hour, and we're very proud of that. When we presented a year ago, our intent was to bring you part two to that plan and would have been recommending a two percent wage adjustment, uh minimum wage adjustment to help elevate our minimum wage once more to the living wage of this community, which during twenty nineteen was twelve dollars and twenty-two cents per hour. Unfortunately, due to the pandemic and its impact on our finances, we are asking the court to pause their efforts on this plan for this year. However, we have every intention of bringing this back and resuming our efforts to accomplish the county's goals to elevate minimum wage for this organization. As a matter of reference for our court, the county currently has twenty-two employees, or point eight percent, that are paid less than twelve dollars and fifty cents an hour. Of those, only eighteen, or point six percent, are paid at the twelve dollar and five cent minimum wage amount. Next slide, please. Similar to what was just presented on the minimum wage plan, a year ago, our court invested in our elected officials by elevating them to eighty percent of our comparable market. If you recall, prior to these changes, our electeds were paid at seventy percent threshold when comparing these positions to their counterparts across the state. This year, we would have had further discussions to continue elevating those wages closer to a ninety percent model, which is consistent with our compensation efforts of the county employees in general. Again, because of the impact of the pandemic, we are asking the court to pause their efforts on this plan for this budget year, and we have every intention of resuming those efforts once more um in future years, once those funds allow. And as a matter of reference, when we discuss elected official salaries, this impacts our county judge, county commissioners, county tax assessor, county clerk, county attorney, our district attorney supplement, district clerk, our sheriff, our JPs, and our constables. Next slide, please. With regard to elected official salaries, there are a few other items for the court to consider this budget year. In accordance with the Government Code, Chapter forty-six, our district attorney is entitled to receive a salary from the state in an amount equal to the state annual salary paid to a district court judge with comparable years of service. A commissioner's court may supplement that amount, but may not pay the state prosecutor an amount less than the compensation it pays its highest-paid district judge. Currently, the county pays the max supplement of eighteen thousand dollars to each of its district court judges. Further, if the combined amount of a state and the county resources exceeds the amount of a maximum combined base for the the district court judge with comparable years of salary, the state comptroller shall reduce the DA's state salary by an amount equal to the excess amount. And if you recall, a year ago, we talked about the various changes the legislation had on our judiciary pay scales, and our district attorney was impacted in the same way. Currently, your district attorney of twenty-eight years is paid a county supplement of fifty-one thousand eight hundred thirty dollars and eighty-eight cents. Additionally, he receives an auto allowance in the amount of eight thousand dollars. As we move into this new budget with a newly elected DA, the court may consider changes to the supplement should they desire to do so. Those options would include creating a tiered system for this supplement based on terms, creating a tiered supplement, a tiered system for this supplement based on qualifications and experience, or leaving the salary supplement the same for the incoming DA. Should the court seek to analyze its options and pursue legal advice as they do so, we are prepared to enter into executive session under five-five-one oh seven-one. But before we do so, I have one more update as it pertains to elected official salaries. Earlier this morning, you heard from Michelle Cochrane regarding the accountability policy procedure update. During budget hearings uh each year, our office will review in executive session any potential violation that occurred during the year to better inform the court of its options regarding such violations. At this time, I would be happy to take any questions the court may have, or should the court desire, we are prepared to enter into executive session as necessary. That does conclude the HR portion of the budget presentation this morning.
Melissa, could you uh, I know he was very explicit, Sam was very explicit, but can you talk a little bit about his concerns? Uh you just sort of, I think I understand it, but I think just the overall concerns that he has about the funding and so forth, and could you do us that favor?
Sure. So if you're referring to Sam's portion regarding the health insurance and the benefits piece, each year, we watch the cost to our, the the increased cost to our healthcare trends. We watch our claim usage to see what the premium change the future year may need to be for our employees. I remember starting with the county many years ago, and we had no increases for a lot of years. Um and then we jumped that by about thirty percent, and that was desperately needed in order to cover the cost of those increased healthcare costs and claims. Over the past few years, we'll bring you different numbers based on our analysis through our consultant, and we'll let you know what the premium increase at minimum needs to be to ensure that Riskful Fund stays fully funded to cover the costs of these healthcare claims. We had already been watching those claims, our numbers had already been dropping, and then, of course, the pandemic hits. In the beginning of the year, we didn't see our fund take a hit with COVID right at the beginning, but we've now started seeing some of those impacts. Regardless, we've been analyzing the numbers and the funding in the pool to see if we have sufficient amounts to cover our costs of both the healthcare and also our claims that are coming in. So when we work with budget, originally, Wally had set aside, and Wally, you can correct me if I'm wrong, but I think one point three million to cover our anticipated increase in premiums that the county employees are responsible for paying as well as the county. And we do match those amounts um to ease the burden, of course, of our employees. However, as our Riskful Fund started falling into the critical trigger points, we realized the need for that infusion that we had spoke about to the court was becoming a reality quicker and quicker. And so the idea then becomes, do we raise employee premiums by a higher amount so that we can replenish the funds into that Riskful Fund and cover the costs? Or do we look at an infusion to be able to reduce those premium amounts? Um because we're in August and we still have five months left in the year, at one point a few weeks ago, our Riskful Fund balance dropped to about six hundred thousand. The next week, it bounced back up to just a little over a million, but we're watching those funds very, very closely. We met with the auditors in the budget department, and we do believe that we may close the year at right at half a million in this fund. But of course, if any other claims come in that weren't anticipated, it could knock and any two claims that hit stop-loss could knock those funds completely out, which is why we think the most responsible thing to do at this time is seek that infusion now. And in speaking with Wally, I I believe there may be an area or an opportunity for for us to infuse those funds this year that may not be available next year.
Thank you. Very nice. Betsy, any additional, because that, you know, any additional, or well, actually, there was a question, Melissa asked you, Wally, and any additional, or well, actually, there was a question, uh, Melissa asked you, Wally, and, uh, on the funds, the amount, could you respond to that, please?
Yes, sir. So there are some, uh, funding we had programmed within our contingencies this year for fiscal year twenty-twenty that did not come to fruition, in particular, one large one is rural transit, the two million dollars we reduced for next year. That has left us with an ability of having funds in our contingency account, um, for this unforeseen need, should the court choose to fund that this fiscal year, which I, I believe is being recommended.
Thank you, Wally.
And additionally.
Any further comments?
Judge, I do believe also our consultant is on the call, but, you know, this, this cost is projected out several months in advance. So when premiums are recommended for the following year, we, we're doing it in very, usually, um, late July, beginning of August. The risk pool's been working on it already for several months, based on the trends that they're seeing. But you're projecting what your cost will be for the next sixteen to seventeen months, because these premiums cover us through December twenty-twenty-one. So when you look at what those projections have been, basically, and, and last year, because there was an increase last year, we were also somewhat conservative on the amount of that increase, thinking that the, that the fund would be able to sustain that premium increase. But and what's happened in reality is there, the claims have exceeded what we projected they would for the premium increase that we proposed last year. So this year's increase is basically partially to make up for the losses we ma- we expe- we're experiencing this current year. So, um, and it includes also increases that are projected for those twelve months of twenty-twenty-one as well.
Well, thank, thank you, Betsy. Betsy, I was gonna ask you, you said the consultant was on the call?
I believe Randy, I saw him join the meeting. I don't know if he wants to add any more information as to what caused the county's projections to be further off than, if there's anything specific that we saw that were, were helped to drive this discrepancy.
So Randy, are you on the call? Is Randy on the call?
Yes. Yes, sir, I'm here.
Oh, Randy, thank you so much. Uh, could you add, enhance what we've been discussing?
Sure. The, and it's, for several months, there's been, uh, an increase in the cost of your claims. Where, uh, currently, across the area, the majority of our clients are seeing declines due to, uh, the block on delivering non-essential healthcare. And so we've, we've looked very closely at a lot of the different claims that are coming in. And at first, we thought, and we, we were aware that a couple of months ago, you had a few high-cost claimants come in, conditions that were just, uh, unfortunately, uh, incurred by some of your participants. They're not COVID-related. But there were a couple of those, and we first, uh, surmised that the increase was due to increase in the large claims activity. But with each successive week and month of additional data, we're digging deeper and deeper. And basically, your employees or in their dependents are just consuming a lot more claims expense than they ever have in the past, uh, even with the, uh, block on the delivery of non-essential care. So now we would, uh, summarize it to say, it's a situation where it's not due to any one single or just a few instances of large claimants, but it's just an increase in the overall magnitude of claims consumption by employees across the board. And we're seeing the same thing. We, you know, we analyze both the medical and the prescription drug utilization. And each month, we go over it in detail with the Risk Pool Board as well. But specifically on the pharmacy data, which is a lot easier to summarize, even this year, you have fewer people filling claims prior, or compared to the last year. So you have fewer people filling fewer claims, yet the cost of the pharmacy consumption is up about fourteen percent year over year. So, uh, it's not that they're consuming more necessarily, but the cost per unit of healthcare being consumed is priced considerably higher than in the prior year.
Okay. Randy, do you see this across your client? Uh, is, are we unique in any way? In, in our, you know, the county or in comparison to your other clients? Are we pretty much in alignment with what's taking place?
No, you're the outlier. Uh, we only have two clients in the El Paso area where claims consumption is up during the last four, three to four months. And every other entity around town, both public and non-public, have seen a decline in their total claim spend between, uh, March and now currently with the data we have in detail through June. Some of them have experienced a fifteen to twenty percent reduction in cost. Your costs are the anomaly and can't come up with any other explanation other than the cost of care that your, uh, members or consumer is higher than the prior year. And somehow, they're still able, uh, to get out there and consume claims. So pharmacy is, is, or prescription drug expenses are pretty good, I guess, unit of measurement, because there is no delay on a pharmacy transaction. When a person goes to the drugstore and fills the claim, the claim happens instantly at that time. And a lot of people are taking advantage of mail order and ninety-day supplies at the various pharmacies. So the consumption of pharmacy continues rocking along without any interruption really due to the pandemic. The medical part is where we're seeing other clients having a decline, uh, with the exception of the county and one other client here in El Paso.
That's interesting. Well, thank you, Randy. Appreciate, uh, your additional comments.
Sure. I wish I had better news for you.
Well, thank you. Betsy?
And Judge, we will continue to monitor this closely. As you've seen, we're keeping the court informed on this very frequently. Um, we are recommending that there, that we will bring an item forward shortly that we recommend that infusion into the fund immediately, which does absorb what would have been an even higher increase in premiums to employees. So the county will be absorbing a portion of the decline in the fund on its own. This is what we would recommend. And then, um, the premium increase for starting in January twenty-twenty-one.
Okay. And, and you know, just, and, and keep an eye on why we're the outliers? And is it a matter of, uh, more education or, or just direct, directing, you know, more opportunities? I, I don't know what it could be. I just don't, uh, I don't like the fact that we're an outlier and I really understand the impact of that. Or not the impact, but why, why is this happening?
I agree, Judge, and I, Melissa and Sam get tired of hearing me say, the more we educate employees, that this isn't a traditional health insurance fund. This is a self-funded policy, that the more we makes self-smart decisions on our own and, and choose the smart access to healthcare, we're all in this pool together, and it impacts all of us when we make smart decisions. It can help save us into the future. So the education piece is really critical.
And having said that. Go ahead.
Sorry, Judge, I was gonna add, the county, my mind does the best job of, uh, communications and education of their employees. None of our other clients have TV sets around in all of your strategic locations. You've got people dedicated to the communication campaign. You've got quarterly health fair meetings. You far exceed your peers when it comes to communication and education.
Oh, how nice of you to say that, Randy. We appreciate that. We always appreciate recognizing of the hard work and, and success of our, of our department. So thank you for, for making those comments. And following up on that, Melissa, I was gonna say that I guess no one understands the, all the, uh, behind-the-scenes, uh, trying to, you know, employees are still working, our employees are still functioning, either, you know, onsite or at home, and, and you, you and your department have continued, uh, you know, taking care of that, making sure that we understand this new normal. Um, and, and having said that as well, is that, you know, maybe, uh, what, what have we learned, uh, from our new normal as far as, you know, a little bit more flexible plans, the, the number of people that are gonna be able to, to work out of the house and, you know, and just the differences and, and whether or not, uh, if you could, you know, during the budget later on, uh, give us a, an understanding of whether there's some savings opportunities, where it's something good for the employee and good for our company, uh, from not having to have, uh, a, a, a space or an office to all these other things. And I just would like to get, and I'm sure the commissioners as well, would like to get a better sense of what it means to, to go into this new normal. And, uh, is that an increase? Uh, is that a decrease? Is there some opportunities to be creative? Like I said, not just from a money perspective, uh, but I know that, um, our productivity, uh, my understanding has gone up, and, uh, our employees have been able to mitigate their balance of life and, and try to do things, uh, of not having the childcare situations that, um, that they might have had when they were working. Uh, so if you could give us, you know, uh, like I said, during the budget process, you know, what are some of the, the opportunities, uh, that we might have, maybe challenges, but opportunities as well, uh, both from a cost savings and then to be a more progressive, um, uh, you know, uh, organization where, uh, some of our millennial, you know, our new, the younger, uh, is more attracted to our organization because we do have more flexibility. Uh, and we've said, you know, that we've, we're sort of sticking our toe in the, in the water for some time about flexed, uh, you know, flexible, uh, schedules and, uh, working from home and, you know, the, the, um, commuting situation, and I think we've been pushed in the water. Uh, so we have to learn as much as we can as we go forward, uh, what are some of these, um, opportunities that we have, uh, to, to be more cost-effective and also, uh, more progressive in the area of, uh, human resources.
Yes, sir. I, I'd be happy to look into that and, and work with Betsy offline before coming back during budget this week.
Well, thank you very much. And once again, uh, congratulations to your team, a lot of hard work, great presentations. Sam sort of comes in from, you know, running an economic development department, uh, back to your, uh, to your team and, and very, um, you know, uh, very fortunate to have his analytical abilities as, as well. So, uh, like I said, you have, you have a great team, uh, great job, you know, keep, keep doing that.
Thank you, Judge. Appreciate it.
Judge, before we come back into executive session to discuss a couple of the items mentioned by Human Resources, um, we would like to let Wally finish up the next few slides, if you would, please, sir.
Absolutely. Go ahead, Wally.
Thank you, Ms. Keller. All right, Miguel. The next portion of today's presentation will provide you with an overview of other agencies whose budgets are set by boards and whose budget requests are subsequently considered for funding by the court. As you can see on this slide, uh, three county entities, uh, that are approved by their boards are presented here. The Juvenile Board has a total budget of twenty-one point nine million dollars from all sources. Last Friday, the Board approved the seventeen point one million dollar general fund portion of JPD's budget, which did meet the requested decrease for fiscal year twenty-twenty-one. The Purchasing Board also approved the budget for the Purchasing Department of one point three million dollars, which also met the requested decrease for twenty-twenty-one, as well as the Auditors Council of Judges approving their budget about a week and a half ago, totaling six point two-four million dollars, which also met the requested decreases. Uh, myself and Ms. Carrillo met with each of the boards prior to the development of the budget to provide them with an overview and the county's, uh, financial, uh, condition. And so we, we meet with the boards as early as possible to frame the tone for the budget hearings upcoming. Next slide, please. Uh, the county, uh, also has provided external agencies with funding in the past. Our proposal for fiscal year twenty-one is included here. Uh, each of these agencies is scheduled to present their request to you on Thursday. You have received those PowerPoint presentations. Suggestion for Crime Stoppers for fiscal year twenty-twenty-one is going back to the five thousand dollar, uh, funding level, which is down from the current ten thousand dollars for twenty-twenty, which was a one-year increase, as well as Project Arriba, uh, going back to the seventy-five thousand dollar proposed funding level for fiscal year twenty-twenty-one in an effort to help manage our, um, budget needs for the future. Next slide, please. The court will also receive budget overview and presentations from Emergency Services Districts One and Two. We received their presentations yesterday, and those have been submitted to the team. You'll hear those presentations on August thirteenth. Overview quickly for ESD Number One, they have a proposed budget of three point nine million dollars, about a half a million dollar increase or sixteen percent. And that change is largely attributable to the opening of the new fire station, which finished construction in July. The new debt related to the, the fire station construction and equipment related to the operations of ESD Number One. The district will be proposing a tax rate of ten cents, uh, that is point zero zero two cents over the no-new taxes rate of, of nine point seven cents. ESD Number Two has proposed and, and already approved a budget, uh, at their board meeting last week of seven point four-seven million dollars, increase of three hundred thousand dollars or four percent. That change is mostly attributable to cap- capital, uh, projects, special projects and improvements, which is included in their presentation. And the board will be proposing a tax rate of point nine five, uh, cents, which is a four-tenths of a cent below the no-new taxes rate of point nine nine nine. Next slide, please. You have received a presentation last week from University Medical Center. Their proposed budget, which you met with the board on, was nine hundred and thirty-three million dollars, an increase of seventy-two million dollars or eight percent. And that change is mostly attributable to personnel increases, new staff, operating and contractual requirements. Additionally, the board has considered and recommended, uh, the tax rate for the UMC of the current tax rate of just over twenty-six point seven cents. That is point zero zero two cents over the no-new taxes rate or nine tenths of one percent. We do have that posted for, um, each of our hearings during this week if you, uh, desire to have further discussion on the UMC budget. Next slide, please. Closing out today's presentation, Judge and Commissioners, uh, are items that will come up to you in your near future, which is the decision-making. Next slide, please. Uh, as a reminder, our twenty-twenty certified values increased by, uh, just over two billion dollars. If the court were to consider maintaining the recommended current tax rate of point four-eight-eight-nine-nine-seven, that could generate an additional two point three million dollars above and beyond the current estimates. Home values in the county, uh, did rise from a hundred and thirty thousand dollars to a hundred and thirty-one, uh, thousand, four hundred and thirty-eight dollars, just over one percent. And if we were to maintain that tax rate, that is a six dollar and eighty cent impact a year or fifty-seven cents. Uh, next slide. Uh, this, it's recommended that the court consider this motion on your upcoming meeting on August seventeenth, along with the tax rate, uh, proposal for University Medical Center. Uh, the motion would be to consider keeping and maintaining the current tax rate, which has been used in this budget process. Uh, they, we would subsequently post a public notice to be considered, uh, for the public on August twenty-fourth at five-thirty PM, the same time that may be proposed for University Medical Center. One change note that, uh, came into effect as a result of Senate Bill Two. You may also have an item on that week's agenda after the public hearing and immediately closing the public hearing to consider the adoption of that tax rate as proposed. If you do not adopt the tax rate on the evening of the twenty-fourth, by statute, you are required to adopt that tax rate within seven days now. You used to have a fourteen-day window, now it's a seven-day window. So if we don't adopt on the twenty-fourth, you would consider the tax rate adoption on the thirty-first, unless you desire to push that calendar into September. By statute, the latest you can adopt a property tax rate for the county is September twenty-ninth. Next slide, please. That will open it up for final questions and recommendations. I would like to thank my team, who's worked diligently behind the scenes to help prepare us for the upcoming, uh, budget year, which has turned out to be quite challenging, uh, in, in the middle of twenty-twenty, cutting the budget by three percent, reviewing that, uh, and then changing, uh, direction on the twenty-twenty-one request and asking for a five percent, um, eligible operating reduction as well. Uh, made it a little bit of a challenge, but we rose to that occasion. Um, I'd like to thank e- each of, each of you, Judge and Commissioners, for your leadership during this time in this, in this particular challenge. And Ms. Keller, who motivates and challenges each of us every day to rise up and meet each challenge that we're faced with head-on and with a positive manner. Um, we are and will remain El Paso strong. And I'll now close the presentation, uh, and open the floor for any additional questions the court may have. And after that, we would ask that you consider going into executive session.
Wally, great overview, uh, before we, uh, really, we go, we go into a, the, the deep dive into our budget, but that was a great, uh, uh, overview, and yeah, you're, it's, it's sort of, uh, almost like trying to do a, an overhaul while you're driving the car. We're still in the eye of the storm, uh, not sure where we're headed, uh, what's gonna happen. Uh, we've got some challenges coming up, and, and of course, the, the budget is the one getting hit pretty hard uh, from different perspectives, whether it's, uh, mandates from the state or. perspectives, whether it's mandates from the state or COVID, you know, sort of changing our our trajectory of where we're headed. So lots of great work for you and your team. And we do appreciate that. Like I said, great overview. But now we, now the deep dive needs to start taking place as we move forward in the budget process. So that, thank you very much for for all that work and getting to, you know, to this point where we're at today.
Thank you, Judge. And you're right, we'll have a review and some scenarios available for your consideration.
Wally, just a quick question. Insofar as our negotiations with the US Marshals on our on our raid on our federal prisoners, do we have more or less a goal date when we will settle that? And will it impact our budget in a in a small way or a larger way?
Yes, sir. My goal date is to bring that to closure before the end of the fiscal year and present it to you no later, if everything goes well, by September 29, so that we can have that included in the revenue estimates provided by the auditor that will directly impact our budget as well. So the goal is this fiscal year before September 29.
Okay. But is the amount so minute that the impact will not be that big or vice versa?
We're not quite there yet, but I can tell you, at a minimum, probably in the million and a half dollar range, sir. I'm hoping for it to be closer to the four or five million dollar range, but at a minimum in a million and a half.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Part of that also depends on how many federal prisoners they send to us per day. As you know, those numbers have been down during the COVID pandemic. We've seen a slight uptick. We're continuing to analyze those very closely every week. I'm trying to make sure to keep you all updated on what the trend is looking like on a periodic basis. But that will also be a factor on how many federal prisoners we house.
Correct.
Thank you. Very good presentation. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, sir.
Judge, Commissioners, I also forgot to mention at the beginning of today's presentation, today we are planning on going till about 12:30. So we would like to have the executive session discussion today, and then probably will need to defer other items for tomorrow. We're scheduled for the majority of the day tomorrow, and then we're scheduled for half a day Thursday. We are working on, the budget calendar is aligned around the Emergence Health Network budget calendar as well, so that our representative to that board can be participate in both budget hearings.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
So if there's no further questions, we would ask if the court would allow us to move into executive session for both item number 10B and for to receive legal advice regarding item number eight.
Okay, can I read those? Yeah, I need to read those in, Betsy. So just to be clear, for item number eight, it's for the all elected officials budgets? Are we talking about only one budget? I'm I'm not clear what you all are going to executive session for.
Item number eight is salaries and expense or allowance for elected county and precinct officers. It would be specifically for the district attorney, I believe.
Okay, all right. So we already have item 10B posted. Okay. And so for item number eight, then it would be pursuant to government, to Texas Government Code Section 551.071, discuss, discuss the annual salary expense and allowance for the district, for the for the salary of the district attorney for the fiscal year beginning October 1, 2020. So that would be the item as would be pulled into executive session for that.
Christina, I apologize. I also believe they need to discuss the salary for JP 6.
Okay.
Correct, Melissa?
In executive session?
Yes.
Okay. I don't know what the legal issue is on on that one. Have that been vetted? I I don't.
I believe I emailed Eddie Sosa on this one last week.
Okay. All right. So then it would be for the discussion on the district attorney salary and for the justice of the peace. Is it place six?
Six dash one.
Six dash one. Okay. So those will be the two then that are discussed for that one under the same item. Just include there, Caesar, when we pulled it into executive session in addition to the district attorney for justice of the peace of place six dash one. Thank you.
Okay, Commissioners, court will now recess into executive session to discuss item number eight. I'm going to read it into the record pursuant to the Texas Local Government Code Section 152.013B. Discuss and take action on the proposed annual salaries, expenses or allowances for elected county and precinct officers for the fiscal year beginning October 1, 2020. Any proposed salary or allowance increases will be published in a local newspaper of general circulation. These salaries and any proposed increases would take effect October 1, 2020 and upon the adoption of the county budget. This will be going into executive session pursuant to Texas Government Code Section 551.071. Also for items 10A and 10B pursuant to Texas Government Code Section 551.074 and 551.071. Commissioners Court will recontinue to take official action.[1007.25]
Hi, this is County Judge Samaniego. The 2020 census count is incredibly important for El Paso. It helps our school, healthcare, food and housing programs get the money they need.
This is County Commissioner Vince Betis for Precinct 3. With your participation, the programs that support affordable housing, public education, and affordable healthcare can receive the funding they deserve.
This is Commissioner called L. Robinson, Precinct 4. Without you, these programs could not be successful.
This is Commissioner David Stout. Participate online, by phone, or by mail. Everyone in El Paso County must be counted, even children and babies. Your responses are safe and required by law to be kept confidential.
Hi, this is Commissioner Carlos Leon from Precinct 1. Let's come together and fill out those 2020 censuses. Together and fearless, we come.
The County of El Paso Public Works Department is offering sandbags at no cost or requirements to the public. The sandbags are outside of the facilities and are available 24 hours a day. The location of the county facilities are the following. The Roden Bridge Fabians Warehouse located at 1331 North Fabians Street in Fabians, Texas, 79838. The Roden Bridge Canotio Warehouse located at 191 Canotio Avenue in Canotio, Texas, 79835. And the Roden Bridge Montana Warehouse located at 14698 Van Lee, El Paso, Texas, 79938. Don't wait in line, pay online. Visit the Financial Recovery Division website at http://www.epcounty.com/budget/financialrecovery.html to make your payments online or find out more about our kiosk locations. We now accept payments on misdemeanor felony and justice of the peace cases.
You can now watch Commissioners Court Meetings on YouTube. Go to youtube.com and search for "El Paso County Commissioners" or "El Paso County, Texas." Subscribe to our channels to see our latest videos.
Did you know the County of El Paso's Purchasing Department is responsible for ensuring that all items and services needed by various county departments are purchased in the matter required by the state of Texas? Whether through formal sealed bids or smaller dollar quotations, the county purchasing team is dedicated to finding the best contracting return on your taxpayer dollars. Additionally, the Purchasing Department is responsible for the tracking of inventory within the county and properly disposing surplus to public auctions. For questions about how to become a vendor and compete for county contracts, or to learn more about public auctions, please contact us at telephone number 915-546-2048.
The 346 District Court Judge Angie Juarez Barred started the El Paso Veterans Treatment Court Program in 2012 for veterans and active service members that have been arrested and charged with a felony or misdemeanor criminal offense. To be considered for this specialty court, the statutory criteria includes: be a veteran or current member of the United States Armed Forces, including a member of the Reserves, National Guard, or State Guard; and suffer from a brain injury, mental illness, or mental disorder, including PTSD, or be a victim of military sexual trauma, all occurring or resulting from military service. Call Sylvia Serna, Veterans Program Director, at 915-546-2119, or email her at scerna@epcounty.com for any information.
Did you know that the County of El Paso's fixed asset control and inventory disposal is handled through the Purchasing Department? Throughout the course of each business year, the county holds live public auctions to dispose of aged equipment, vehicles, furniture, and other items that are no longer needed. To find out about upcoming auctions or to learn more about the county's inventory disposal process, contact the Purchasing Department at telephone number 915-546-2048.
Hi, this is County Judge Samaniego. The 2020 census count is incredibly important for El Paso. It helps our school, healthcare, food and housing programs get the money they need.
This is County Commissioner Vince Betas for Precinct 3. With your participation, the programs that support affordable housing, public education, and affordable healthcare can receive the funding they deserve.
This is Commissioner called L. Robinson, Precinct 4. Without you, these programs could not be successful.
This is Commissioner David Stout. Participate online, by phone, or by mail. Everyone in El Paso County must be counted, even children and babies. Your responses are safe and required by law to be kept confidential.
Hi, this is Commissioner Carlos Leon from Precinct 1. Let's come together and fill out those 2020 censuses. Together and fearless we count.
The County of El Paso Public Works Department is offering sandbags at no cost or requirements to the public. The sandbags are outside of the facilities and are available 24 hours a day. The location of the county facilities are the following. The Roden Bridge Fabians Warehouse located at 1331 North Fabians Street in Fabians, Texas, 79838. The Roden Bridge Canotillo Warehouse located at 191 Canotillo Avenue in Canotillo, Texas, 79835. And the Roden Bridge Montana Warehouse located at 14698 Vanley, El Paso, Texas, 79938.
Don't wait in line, pay online. Visit the Financial Recovery Division website at http://www.epcounty.com/budget/financialrecovery.html to make your payments online or find out more about our kiosk locations. We now accept payments on misdemeanor felony and justice of the peace cases.
You can now watch Commissioners Court Meetings on YouTube. Go to youtube.com and search for "El Paso County Commissioners" or "El Paso County, Texas." Subscribe to our channels to see our latest videos.
Did you know the County of El Paso's Purchasing Department is responsible for ensuring that all items and services needed by various county departments are purchased in the manner required by the state of Texas? Whether through formal sealed bids or smaller dollar quotations, the county purchasing team is dedicated to finding the best contracting return on your taxpayer dollars. Additionally, the Purchasing Department is responsible for the tracking of inventory within the county and properly disposing surplus to public auctions. For questions about how to become a vendor and compete for county contracts, or to learn more about public auctions, please contact us at telephone number 915-546-2048.
The 346 District Court Judge Angie Juarez Barred started the El Paso Veterans Treatment Court Program in 2012 for veterans and active service members that have been arrested and charged with a felony or misdemeanor criminal offense. To be considered for this specialty court, the statutory criteria includes be a veteran or current member of the United States Armed Forces, including a member of the Reserves, National Guard, or State Guard, and suffer from a brain injury, mental illness, or mental disorder, including PTSD, or be a victim of military sexual trauma, all occurring or resulting from military service. Call Sylvia Serna, Veterans Program Director at 915-546-2119, or email her at scerna@epcounty.com for any information.
Did you know that the County of El Paso's fixed asset control and inventory disposal is handled through the Purchasing Department? Throughout the course of each business year, the county holds live public auctions to dispose of aged equipment, vehicles, furniture, and other items that are no longer needed. To find out about upcoming auctions or to learn more about the county's inventory disposal
Hi, this is County Judge Samaniego. The 2020 census count is incredibly important for El Paso. It helps our school, healthcare, food, and housing programs get the money they need.
This is County Commissioner Vince Bettes for Precinct 3. With your participation, the programs that support affordable housing, public education, and affordable healthcare can receive the funding they deserve.
This is Commissioner called L. Robinson, Precinct 4. Without you, these programs could not be successful.
This is Commissioner David Stout. Participate online, by phone, or by mail. Everyone in El Paso County must be counted, even children and babies. Your responses are safe and required by law to be kept confidential.
Hi, this is Commissioner Carlos Leon from Precinct 1. Let's come together and fill out those 2020 census. Together and fearless we come.
The County of El Paso Public Works Department is offering sandbags at no cost or requirements to the public. The sandbags are outside of the facilities and are available 24 hours a day. The location of the county facilities are the following. The Roden Bridge Fabens Warehouse located at 1331 North Fabens Street in Fabens, Texas, 79838. The Roden Bridge Canotio Warehouse located at 191 Canotio Avenue in Canotio, Texas, 79835. And the Roden Bridge Montana Warehouse located at 14698 Vanley, El Paso, Texas, 79938.
Don't wait in line, pay online. Visit the Financial Recovery Division website at http://www epcounty.com/budget/financialrecovery.html to make your payments online or find out more about our kiosk locations. We now accept payments on misdemeanor, felony, and justice of the peace cases.
You can now watch Commissioners' Court Meetings on YouTube. Go to youtube.com and search for El Paso County Commissioners or